I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me get my little announcement packet. You better be better today. Good evening. Okay, announcements. Corprow, a surveying company subcontracted by Hatch, Mott, McDonald, will be working along the right-of-way on Route 101A, Continental Boulevard and Hall Ave tomorrow, Friday, November 20th, from approximately 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. The town offices will be closed on Thursday, November 26th, and Friday, November 27th, for the Thanksgiving holiday. The transfer station will also be closed on Thursday, November 26th, for the Thanksgiving holiday. However, will reopen on Friday, November 27th. I'm gonna clock any minute, that's why I'm distracted. Thursday, December 3rd, at 7:00 p.m., there will be a regular council meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And on Thursday, December 17th, at 7:00 p.m., again, a regular council meeting. The only additional announcement I would like before telling, giving it to Eileen, is that there has been a tentative joint school board and town council meeting set up for Thursday, December 10th. I will hear back from Chris Ortega, the Chair, very soon. He's gonna check with his people, but it sounded okay. It'll be finalized shortly. So far, I have three topics for the agenda. First is the SRO. Second is the O'Gara Tennis Courts, which we're going to be talking tonight, about tonight, and the old business. And third, Eileen suggested this, and I think it's a really good idea, in fact, Chris doesn't even know about it yet, is to have Tim Thompson address both groups to update us regarding the housing proposals and possible impacts on school population. So I will call Chris and have him add that. Now, I have not heard from any other suggestions, so I would like to request that if you do have any other suggestions for the agenda, please contact me by next Friday, November 27th. Okay?
Is the time answered?
Seven?
Yeah.
It'll be at 7:00 p.m., correct.
Thank you.
Okay. And that's all my announcements. Eileen?
Okay. Was your first, your first announcement had to do with the work being done on the public rights of way?
Correct.
The state ones? I just want to clarify, in case I misunderstood you, that it is not on Hall Avenue, it's from Hall Avenue to...
Okay, it says "and" Hall Avenue.
Okay, it isn't "and" Hall Avenue, because it's not, that's not owned by the state.
Okay. So it's from Hall Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
The annual Badges vs. Hard Hats Community Food Drive is on. Drop off non-perishable food items at either the Merrimack Police Department lobby or the Public Works Department now through January 1st. All donations are distributed to the community food banks for families in need this holiday season. Merrimack's winter parking ban is now in effect. There is no parking between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., now through April 15th. Let's keep the streets clear, so Public Works can treat the roads and remove snow for safe commuting. Thank you.
That's it. Okay, Kinder Morgan, just a couple of things I would like to be able to update people on. We have received notification that there's going to be a public informational session for the New Hampshire Site Evaluation Commission. Various sites, and I have, do have the dates and the places for it. And this has to do with acquiring a Certificate of Site and Facility. And let me get the Certificate of Site and Facility for the project. The dates are as follows, and they're all from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. On December 1st, it's going to be Wyndham High School with a December 8th snow date. December 2nd is going to be the Hidden Hill Estates. And, let's see. I just noticed that I didn't have the town. That's going to be in Ridge. And December 3rd, which is for our county, I'm sorry, oh, is the Hampshire Hills with a December 10th snow date. They're also gonna be holding open houses at the same time, so at each site, they're gonna have an open house from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., so it'll be 6:00 to 10:00 concurrently, but they'll have an hour before.
I'm sure it was in Milford?
Milford, yeah.
Since we have a meeting on the 3rd, how do we accommodate that?
Being prepared for that question...
Well, I, unbeknownst to me...
Well, first of all, we'll make a decision here, does this group want to reschedule? There is an open night, December 2nd, this room is available, which is the Wednesday, and also, let's see, the planning boards on Tuesday. We're not gonna meet on Friday. So we could meet on Wednesday, if, if the group so chose to. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd say go with the 2nd.
I'd say we move it so anyone that wanted to attend that would be free to do so. I've got, I'm wide open on the 2nd.
Same here, I agree with Jody, I think it's important that we go on the 3rd.
I, go ahead.
I don't care, however, without the lack of sarcasm, the meeting really is just not anything important again, it's just going through, it's one of those window dressing meetings, for what it's worth, my opinion, my cynical opinion.
Potentially, I might not be able to make the 2nd, but I don't think that should hold off switching.
I refer to what is a dog and pony show.
Well, then, why, why should we, why should we change our agenda, our meeting? Why don't we just have our meeting? If there was a meeting that of substance, of course, I'd be on board, but it's not a meeting of substance, so why don't we just have our meeting on the 3rd? One man's opinion, out of six. Is there a motion?
I, I didn't know if I needed a motion or just a consensus. Any...
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter to me, either. The only hesitation I have is that I may not be here on the 2nd, but that should not stop the group from being able to meet. I think the majority has agreed that the 2nd should be it. Okay. So can we change that on the website? And I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that Tom Koenig has been excused for this evening's meeting. Okay.
Make sure Council Koenig is aware of the, the date change.
Thank you, thank you, yep. Okay, get back to my, okay. Now, you've all received, this has to do with the letter that I distributed. This is a letter that has been written by a regional group of municipal officials, and has to do with asking FERC to combine the proposals for additional gas pipe capacity in New England into one consolidated FERC review. There's more than one review being done, and they're being asked to put it together. So, we have been asked to review this letter, to see if we'd be willing to sign it, and I've distributed that before. Does anyone have opinions? Yes, Eileen?
It's more than New Hampshire, is that right?
I'm sorry, thank you. It's for, it's written to the federal congressional delegation members of Massachusetts and New Hampshire. That's absolutely correct. Yes, Jerry?
There's two letters, right? There's one to directed to FERC, and then there's one to the congressional delegations as well. They're both asking for support of the same consolidation of the review of all the pipelines.
Is Chairman Bay from FERC?
Yes, yes.
That's why I was misled.
And so, the one to the congressional delegation is asking our delegation to make the same request to FERC that all the municipalities are making.
Correct, so there's two different...
But same, same request.
The same thing. Thank you for that clarification.
One is, am I correct in saying that one is from Congresswoman Custer?
No, there's, Custer's is different.
Okay, so there's...
Which I have here as well, which I was just gonna notify.
Okay, so now, there's, there's two letters from the joint communities? I'm misunderstanding you.
The one letter, it cites Annie Custer's request in its footnotes, saying similar along those lines, and then I think there was one, I read this a couple nights ago. They're, they're saying the letter, a letter sent by the Board of Selectment in towns in Mass, and then they've got a footnote, describes the analysis we are requesting in more detail, as do scoping comments submitted by the Massachusetts Attorney General and Conservation Law Foundation, as well as New Hampshire U.S. Representative Custer's recent letter to you. And that's in the letter to FERC. So there's...
Yes, so one letter is to the delegation members...
Right.
Of Massachusetts and New Hampshire.
Right.
The other is to actually FERC. But basically the same thing, more detail in the FERC letter.
Right, and the one to the delegation is asking them to contact FERC to make the same request.
Correct. So we have two letters.
What is the intent by consolidated review? Because you have Spectra and the NET. Those are, those are really, and I'm not even talking about the ancillary pipelines unless there's another third pipeline that I'm not aware of.
There is.
There is.
Which is...
One more, isn't it? I don't know its formal name, but there is, there are two pipelines through Massachusetts. There's the one from Portland, and, and then there's the NED.
But the one from Portland is Spectra?
No.
No? No. Spectra is one of the ones running through Massachusetts, I don't know, I forget the name of the other one. But there is a second one.
I thought the, I thought the Spectra Pipeline was running north-south, up from, up from Everett, through, through Essex County into Portsmouth, and then somewhere connecting with the pipeline running up 95 into Maine.
The, the letter names the different projects. It said this should include, but not be limited to Tennessee Gas, Kinder Morgan's Northeast Energy Direct, Tennessee Gas, Kinder Morgan's Connective, Connect...
See, it's not just me tonight.
... Connecticut, oh my god, you see? Expansion, Spectra's Atlantic Bridge, Spectra's Access Northeast, the Portland Natural Gas Transmission System, Continent to Coast Project, and any other gas pipeline proposal currently before FERC.
I think the purpose, and this is my understanding, excuse me, is that it will highlight that there's so many pipelines being considered, that, that may in fact, the, the NED pipeline might not be needed in terms of capacity. If they do it on an individual basis, they're not gonna be able to evaluate it in that view. That's my understanding of it. I'm gonna see if anyone else thinks otherwise.
Yeah, rather than...
I would say furthermore, it's a completely anti-gas line pipeline letter, which is why I'm not supporting it. They want to throw every monkey into the barrel on this one, and have us okay it. I for one have been on the record, many votes about the whole thing in Merrimack, but I've also been in the record from day one, saying I'm not against American infrastructure, energy pipelines of every kind in America, so that's why I can't support this letter.
And I, and I would...
If KM does something to us in town that we need to address, I'm right on board with everybody, as I've been, as I said, the record show, but this letter to me is just, it's, it's one big huge anti-pipeline, anti, pretty much every type of natural gas energy for the future. They want to just put a stamp and say, all these different lines, it's just, that's it, thank you.
And I would agree with Dan, because I've, I've said that the Spectra Pipeline is expansion of existing infrastructure, it's not new construction, as to what, what the NED is, which is why I oppose the NED, but furthermore, you know, the issue as it relates to Portland, you know, up in Maine, the issue relates to Connecticut, quite honestly, doesn't have, doesn't have any direct impact to, to our community or to our particular region. The analysis that, that we've been looking at is, is impacts directly occurring here in New Hampshire. And to request a consolidated review of looking at all these pipelines, I think is contrary, is contrary to what we're trying to do, and I also think mutes our ability to be able to respond to any potential issue that may come, come up as it relates to the NED. I think, I think we, I think we lose, at, at the intervener level, if we see consolidation, I think we lose, we lose, in my opinion, we lose a little bit of leverage.
Everybody's interpreting the letter. Could I read the letter, so the people at home understand what the letter says? I don't, I don't take it as anti-pipe, I mean...
Personally, I don't either.
No, and I think it's clearly asking for a consolidation of the, of the review of the projects, because the way the, the process is going now, each project is being reviewed and considered individually, so they could approve every single project, and then you're going to have such an onslaught of natural gas coming to the area, it just, it doesn't make sense. So, just...
There are some pivotal parts in that.
Yeah, it says, "Combining the projects in one consolidated review would foster an open and transparent process for the needs analysis critical for FERC's decision on which projects, if any, may warrant the eminent domain authority associated with the certificate of public convenience and necessity. Public need cannot be evaluated without consideration of other projects attempting to fill the same or similar need. Cities and towns cannot be forced to host a pipeline solely because an energy company would like to build one. Need must be evaluated taking into account competing projects as well as non-fossil fuel solutions such as solar, wind, small-scale hydroconservation, accelerated repair of leaks, and efficiency improvements." To me, that's a very reasonable request.
There's only one other sentence I'd probably add to. Only by comparing competing lines in the history of these companies do we get improvement through competition. These projects may well be redundant with each other. So, as soon as I'm dead, sure. So, again, I don't think it's a, I don't interpret it as meaning that all of these are unnecessary. I interpret it as all of these need to be considered when evaluating the need for the New England area. And by doing it all together, you'll be able to get the, the total view, and make decisions about, well, we need three of them, not five, we need two versus that. So that's what I perceive as the, the intent. Not against all of them. Yes, first of all, Eileen?
And that may be, may be it. After they do their whole evaluation, net may be it, it may not be, but at least, you know, so that's why I think it's not anti-pipeline, because it's, it's looking at everything at the same time.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
I'm gonna reiterate, it is anti-pipeline, and it's factually incorrect in several ones, but I'm just gonna give you this biggest smoking gun in the whole letter, if you can't be convinced of this statement. When you said it, 'cause you triggered it again when I, when I read it. An energy company wanting to build a pipeline, may I remind you of the facts? Kinder Morgan does not want to build this pipeline, Kinder Morgan didn't come up with this pipeline. The Department of Energy put out a bid nationally, across the world, and KM fulfilled the bid. So, the letter is deceiving, that sentence makes it sound like KM wants to build this pipeline for profit, et cetera, and it's KM, KM, KM. It is not, this project is not KM-driven, this project is the Department of Energy-driven.
Well, I think...
That's just a fact from the day one, and everybody wants to just trash KM at every single turn, and that's what this letter does. So, that's fine, we can take a vote, and, and you can send it on its way, but this letter to me was very clear, in the opposite opinion of, of you guys.
Tom?
Yeah, the, if I've got it straight, if not, my apologies, but I presume that the Department of Energy's request for proposals, or whatever, was as a result of what the region experienced a couple of years ago during that 50-day window for energy. So they put that out there. And then Kinder Morgan wasn't obliged to apply, and neither was Spectra or anybody else, but they did. The other piece of this is that one of the requirements that's laid on FERC by the statute is not allowing capacity that will go unused, and therefore become an additional burden on the ratepayers. And if they do these independently of each other, there's a very real possibility that that could happen. We're already seeing some of that in some of the other analyses that were, that are being floated around as to the amount of capacity and how much might be used, and how the efficiencies that have crept, miraculously crept into the system over the last couple of years, are mitigating some of the requirement for that amount of gas to be pumped in here for 50 days a year. So I don't, you know, it, it's not artfully worded, as it, as it could have been. Well, I'm trying to be, okay? And, you know, and, and that's, you know, so...
But to imply, this is gonna sound really tacky, Dan, but to imply that Kinder Morgan is doing it out of some patriotic duty...
Yeah.
...in response, in response to a...
If it sounded like that, that wasn't intentional. No, that was not, no.
In response to a, a national call...
They heard the clarion call.
I mean, and, but I'm, but that's not putting them down.
I know.
They're a company that wants to make money. I don't blame them for that.
That's what they, that's what they do.
How I came up with that, I don't, anyway.
Let me assure you, that when FERC gets this, they're gonna interpret this as narrowly as they can.
Would, would you like both letters simultaneously brought forward, or one at a time?
Both would be fine with me.
Okay.
Unless there's objection to that. Okay, go ahead.
I, I make a motion that the town council sign the letter, the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition, the Municipal Coalition Against the Pipeline, and the New Hampshire Municipal Pipeline Coalition, regional group letter to FERC, and to the federal congressional delegation members of Massachusetts and New Hampshire.
Second.
Might I recommend, 'cause this is gonna be from the coalition, that you allow me or Eileen to sign it? It's gonna be a group...
With either the Chairman Harrington or Town Manager Eileen Cabanel?
I can, yeah, okay.
With Nancy having authorization to sign on behalf of the council?
Right, 'cause it's gonna be a coalition, so we'd never get to get, all of us get together. Tom, you okay with that?
Yes.
Change? Okay, any other discussion? Yes, Finley?
I just wanna speak to while, while I will be abstaining. I didn't actually have an opportunity to read this, it wasn't in our packet, and I just, I failed to pull it off the email.
You just didn't pay attention to my email.
I did.
Do you wanna take five minutes to read it? It's important, Finley, that you take a vote.
Oh, she's got the vote, she's awesome.
Well, I'm suspecting so, which is why I've chosen to, you know, to abstain instead of, you know, casting a vote at this point.
Okay, so we have one minus, so we're basing it on six. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, you're right. Okay, all those against, negative, would be Counselor Boyd and Counselor Dwyer. And abstentions, Counselor Rathaus. So it's three, two, one. Only one other thing, it's just, there's no decision to be made, but I just wanted to be able to make it public that Congressman Custer has also sent a letter to Norman Bay, who's the Chair of FERC. I'm just gonna read one sentence, and basically, again, requesting the same thing. "We are acutely aware of the regional need for electricity and the plethora of energy projects that are being proposed in all New England states to meet that need. Given the regional nature of our electric market and the complicated changes that are underway across the region, both with new projects being proposed and with older one sources leaving the grid, we believe that FERC can only properly perform its duties by assessing these projects as a whole." So again, it's just a letter from her, that's basically communicating what these other letters did. That was just an FYI. And last, just to let everyone know, tomorrow Kinder Morgan is going to be submitting their final application to FERC. Okay. Lee?
Did you just, I just wanted to mention, because our last meeting, we had indicated that ACOM, and I can't remember what the acronym stands for, I apologize. Okay, the, the ACOM, um, letter, the last meeting we had, Nancy, you had publicly stated that it was so inaccurate, the map and everything, that we hadn't responded, so I just thought you might want to mention the new updated letter, and that we're working on a response to that.
Right, we have received, go ahead, Eileen.
Yes, we have Tim Thompson responding to the letter. It's a little bit different than, when you read it, when you read it again, it's a little bit different from, from what we're thinking of, which has been primarily about environmental type issues. It, obviously, it shows a different route. It shows the, the new proposed route, and it also, not only does it take into consideration various aspects of water, but it also, and, and natural resources and that kind of thing, but it also takes into consideration certain, certain spaces between the, the proposed pipeline and new, new construction, new industry, new residential development that is, is underway or being planned. So there's those components that also have to be added to it. And as I said, Tim Thompson is...
Responding.
Responding to that.
Thank you. And then, no update on a meeting with the Merrimack Village District and Kinder Morgan, I take it?
Actually, there is one scheduled on the schedule.
Oh, there is?
Yeah.
Well, no one called me.
The only reason I know, because we happened, Paul and I happened to notice it. According to this, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on December 3rd, MVD is meeting with Kinder Morgan.
How are they doing that, if they're having an informational meeting?
That was my question when I read it. Of course, that's, that's from 6:00 to 10:00.
Right, it's 4:00 to 6:00, that's not...
All right, I'm sorry, the MVD meeting is at 4:00?
4:00 to 6:00.
Do they have a meeting place listed on there, Nancy?
Uh, here.
Here? Glad I asked, thank you. Glad you pulled up that calendar.
Yeah.
What's it due?
December 3rd.
How before the meeting is open?
Correct. Well, actually, it's from 6:00 to 10:00, is Milford.
What?
Yeah. Yes, Dan?
With the filing, was it clear there, at that point, they're also gonna reveal the route?
Well, my understanding is that all routes are submitted, but they will designate their preferred route.
Okay, that's, and everybody, so that will be public information as soon as they file it? People wanted to know what route they, they may show 10 routes, and they're gonna give a, a favorite to one of them.
Right, it'll be in...
Just want everybody to know that.
It'll be in Section 10, which is Alternatives. If you can puzzle it out, if they use the blasted serial number system they use for putting that stuff on, on the internet.
And just for everybody to know, that is a really important date, because that is, and historically, from what I, we've researched, when they ask for that route, their preferred route, 99, 99% of the time, that's what they get.
That's what they get.
So just with, so if out of 10 routes is shown, the route that they favor, that would spell that that is the route that will come through our town, the way, the way they are suggesting.
Okay.
One more question before we leave this. Our application to file for intervener status, are we going to formally have a letter that the town council presents publicly, and we vote on? We've got 21 days after they file, right, in order to do that?
Already working on it, but go ahead, Eileen.
It's not after they file, it's after, it's after FERC accepts it, there's a formal, they have a certain number of days, I believe it's 10-day business days...
10 business days, yeah.
...that they have to accept, actually formally accept, that it's complete. And then, after that, we have 21 days. So, we are, Joanna has already drafted the letter for us, so we're ready to go whenever any of that happens.
Thank you.
Yes, Dan?
Right, clarification, I, just so people know, unless I'm wrong, that time period is accurate for accepting the application, but not approval?
Correct.
Right.
So just 'cause they accept the application, doesn't mean any, nothing's been decided?
It's like, is it complete?
Yes.
It's like the, it's like what the planning board does, the planning board accepts a, accept a plan, if it's complete...
Just clarification.
In other words, it's got enough information on them for them to conduct the review that they're required to conduct.
Right.
And once they make that determination, then that's when that...
And once they make that determination, then that's when that 21-day clock starts running. But it also triggers them to issue a schedule for their hearings and the process that they're gonna go through that generally takes about 365 days. Because they're planning on being done with that by this time next year, so that they can start construction in January of 2017.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Anyone wants to? Okay, well, let's add. Okay, any comments from the press or public? Not yet. There are no recognitions, resignations, retirements. Appointments, we do have the winter farmers' market, submitted by Merrimack Agricultural Commission. Mr. McCabe, town council will be presented with the details of the winter's farmers' market. Looking forward to this. Yes?
Um, I met with Don and Bob last week to talk about this, and they are, not to steal your thunder, but they're, they're gonna be located at the Adult Community Center, and they already have a contract with the Adult Community Center. So it, it wasn't necessary for them to come forward to ask you, but I just thought it was something that was really great that was going on and that they should get some publicity and kudos for doing the farmers' market throughout the winter.
Mr. McCabe and Mr. Miner.
My name is Bob McCabe. With me tonight is Don Miner. Thank you, Madam Council and members present for having us. As you know, we had a great summer farmers' market at 526 DW Highway, and the vendors and a lot of our customers were acquiring what happens after the last summer market. So Don has volunteered to pick it up and go with it, and I'll let him explain to you.
Oh, excuse me, there's been a, well, there is a demand in the area for an ongoing farmers' market. I do participate in Salem, and that's a year-round market, so I don't mean to keep bringing that up. Kinda trying to model that after that, I guess. They're on, the, the market manager there is on Cook's Corner on MUR every once a month, with the crazy hat, and she's neat. Anyway, so all summer I was polling the customers and asking if there was, if they'd like it, and they said yes. So I went forward and got all this stuff done, I guess. So I, I'm still waiting to hear back from vendors, because it was such a late, kinda putting it all together, but we're looking at kicking it off December 3rd, all night. From 3:00 to 6:00, so I guess I'm gonna miss a couple of meetings.
3:00 to 6:00 PM on December 3rd, so that's the Thursday.
We'll do every Thursday, every Thursday, we're gonna do that through the winter, and we'll, we'll see how it goes. I, I think we'll do, do fine with it.
We toured the senior center a week ago or two, when we sat with the town manager in finance, and finance approved landlord's report, right? Am I saying that right, Paul? Anyway-
We reviewed the lease and-
The lease, thank you. And the facility was very nice. Actually, I hadn't been there in a while. Don chose, he chose the right side of the, of the room that's, the bigger the rooms. We have to set up tables and chairs and that type of thing and put it back as we found it, and it has potential. You know, we're gonna put some signage out, we'll advertise to the library and through the weekly reminder.
Now, what kind of things do you sell during the winter? Like eggs, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, well, for myself, I have meat year-round, so.
Oh, okay.
Well, the vendors, we have some that, you know, they, they harvest their honey. So we got a guy coming for honey, some maple syrup vendor. People make cookies and cakes.
Pre-made meals.
Yeah, pre-made meals.
Couple of our farms have big greenhouses, which they grow some of the cold products in salads and regulars and things like that, under matting in 38, 40-degree weather. It's possible to do it. And they have their storage items, you know, like the potatoes and onions and winter squashes and that type of thing. So there is a little variety out there, and it gives them a chance to get rid of their existing supply and give them some cash product to get, go into spring and buy their seeds and look forward to it. We don't know when it's gonna end in the springtime, because we'll start the summer again in the middle of June, middle of June. We'll just see how it goes and see what the feedback is.
Right.
And-
Got two, two vendors that do hydroponics as well, ones from Lunedary and Lineboro.
We have a wine lady, we have a jelly lady. People do prepaid, pre-made meals for people on the way home. Remember, we had 31 vendors last summer. If we get 10 or 12 of them back to start again, that would be a great thing-
Nice.
-with their variety. So we wanna let the council know what's going on.
We wish you luck.
We are using the, your facilities across the street, and we appreciate that, and we'll need luck, and pass the word.
Well, when it's being a new thing, I'm sure you already, you already know.
Yeah, we're gonna push it on Facebook, which is a, is a huge tool for us. We're working on the DPW, maybe we can borrow their sign for a day or two, put it out. It, it's stuff like, and we got the, I can't remember, sorry, Merrimack Journal.
Right, the weekly.
We're gonna try in there.
Yeah, well, there's also the Sign Board at the PD, too.
Yeah.
We are self-financing, so we're not asking for any money.
Yeah.
And we'll see how it goes, you know. We just want you all to be aware of what's going on.
Very good. Any questions or comments from any?
Good luck, gentlemen.
Yeah, good luck.
Thanks.
Thanks for having us.
You can stop by on the way to the meeting and pick something up.
Yeah. Yeah.
What was that?
Thought you were gonna bring us prepared meal.
Samples.
I saw, I saw raw meat.
And wine.
Okay, public hearing none. Any legislative updates from any state reps seeing none? Town manager's report, Eileen?
Okay, the ZBA last night approved three variances that allow the Monahan companies to proceed forward with plans for mixed-use development to the planning board. The proposal calls for a mix of hotel, retail, office, restaurants, and apartment uses along with a parking garage. The project will still require both a conditional use permit from the planning board as well as a site, site plan approvals from various phases of the project before construction can commence. And just to also, to further clarify, it's, this is proposed to go at the base of the mall property where a hotel pad site was designated earlier. The holiday season is upon us, so please secure your valuables, I was gonna say vegetables, out of sight in your vehicles.
We're all having trouble tracking time.
While shopping and make arrangement for package deliveries to your office. Can you believe that? People actually pick up packages at your home now? Or your neighbor's home, so they're not left out unsecured on your doorstep.
Some of the times.
The Merrimack Fire Department wants everyone to be safe this Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving is the busiest day of the year for home cooking fires. Stand by your pan always, instead of stand by your man, right? Remain in the kitchen when cooking at high temperatures. If you have to leave the kitchen, shut off the stove. It sounds, you know, ridiculous to have, to say these things, but you really do need to say them. Do not fry a turkey on a wooden deck and make sure the turkey is completely thawed before placing it in the hot oil. Turkey fryers can easily boil over and catch a house on fire if they are too close to the combustibles. And I believe we had something like that this past year.
That's right.
So if you follow some safe, simple safety tips, everyone will have something to be thankful for. Our wastewater treatment facility was selected as New Hampshire Plant of the Year for 2014.
Absolutely.
Congratulations, Jim. The selection was made by the New Hampshire Water Pollution Control Association and will be announced at the winter meeting held at the Crown Plaza in December. Finalists were the cities of Concord, Keene, and the town of Milford, but we won. Selection is based on the environmental permit compliance, safety record, and innovative and energy efficiency projects. Thank you.
Now, we've received awards, they've received awards before.
Yes.
So it's not surprising, I guess is what we should say. Congratulations. Okay, there's nothing on the consent agenda. Oh, business, we have O'Gara Drive Tennis Court follow-up discussion. Town council will discuss the details and options from the latest information received from the National Park Service relative to the O'Gara Drive tennis courts. Okay, obviously, this has been a longstanding discussion, and we've been waiting for this for a long time to let us know what the options are. Now, I'm not sure, do you want, I think, do you wanna talk about the different, there are basically three options.
Let me just do a little background.
Perfect.
Those who haven't, aren't familiar with this?
Yeah.
Who, okay, so many years ago, I don't know the exact dates, we, we received a grant through the state from the federal government to pay 50% of the cost of constructing tennis courts. And I believe at the same time, they also, the grant also included the skating rink, because they wanted the amenity to be, to contain a whole year's worth of recreational activity. The second grant that we got, maybe 10 years or so later, was to reconstruct the tennis courts and to add lighting. So what that has done, so consequently, so, so the town built these facilities on a piece of school, a piece of land that they leased and have leased for many years from the Merrimack School District at, at, on O'Gara Drive. And that piece of property not only includes the ones that are encumbered by this grant, which are the tennis courts and the skating rink facility, but it also includes a skateboard park, basketball courts, and is there something else? That's it, okay. So we have, so we have been working diligently to work through the state agency to get them to speak to the federal agency to find out what our requirements are now that the tennis courts are in disrepair. So we have, we have two issues. One relates to our obligations under the lease to the school district, and the other one relates to the town's obligation to the federal government for keeping these, these recreational amenities in perpetuity.
And part of that consideration is when we looked into the cost of repairing. Thank you. When we looked into the cost of repairing the tennis courts, I don't remember the exact amount, what was it? Do you remember?
183.
183,000, and it was only a three-year warranty, which initiated a discussion about why, and it really was a poor surface and that kind of thing. So that initiated, this group made a decision not to expend the money for repair, and that we would look into finding out what our obligations are, what options we have, from not just the state, but also the federal government, because that is who we also had the agreement with, right, the grant with. So in result, just like, go ahead.
I would, to be clear, though, though, we agreed not to spend that kind of money on that site.
Correct.
We never ruled out if the school board had said, well, we wanna, well, let's move it. The discussion never got off the ground.
There was no discussion.
There was no discussion. It was, it was mentioned, but then nobody took up on it. They wanted it there no matter what.
Correct.
Just for clarification.
Yep. So we received a letter, finally, if you want.
Matt, Matt Casperius is also here. He was the one that finally unlocked the key, had the key to unlock getting through to the various people in order to get somebody interested in this enough to respond to us. So the, we, Matt received an email from Eric Feldbaum, who is the community and recreation specialist for the Division of Parks and Recreation under the New Hampshire Department of Resources and Economic Development, after consulting with the federal land and natural, National Park Service. So I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm going to give you my take on, on the options, and if, if I misinterpret something, you correct me.
Yeah, it's just a real short, I mean, we have it in the backup.
Right.
It's been available to the public, too, but it's a quick summary, so.
Okay, that's why I will.
Okay.
So there are three options. The first option is that the town may break the lease accord, according to the federal government, not according to what our restrictions are. So if the town, if, if the lease expires, then the provisions for the Section F, which is, is the replacement or the impermeability section of the responsibility, remains in effect. And so what would happen is the town would then have to replace the recreational property, substitute it in some other area, and it can't be on a, a site that's already designated as a recreational space or park or open space.
And has to be equal or greater in value.
And you said, you said if, if the lease expires, this is if the town were to break the lease prior to the expiration?
Right, exactly, yes. So that's the first one. So in, in the first one, the town would then be responsible for this new recreational facility to which the impermeability requirements would then attach to that, to the new recreational opportunity. The second one is that the town may allow the current lease to expire, and if so, then the town would need to fulfill its obligations through the end of the lease. And what they said that the town may do is to formally request of the federal government, National Park Service, that the property, this facility be declared obsolete, which they're prepared to do, and, and then convert that, that piece of property to passive recreational use, which could be benches, it could be a volleyball court, or anything from, anything that the town wanted to do.
That's, in my reading, are you saying that that's until the end of the lease? Or is that after the lease expires?
Until the end of the lease.
Right.
If you get it declared obsolete, you then have the ability, under the grant obligations, to make this into a passive recreational area.
Okay.
But the caveat to that is that you could never sign a lease on that property again, unless you wanted the, the obligations to move forward with the National Park Service. And they told us, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but if the lease is incre, has, is extended, then it will then apply to the whole property, including the skate park and including the basketball courts and everything. So-
Over the entire parcel.
The entire parcel. So in order to break your obligations entirely from the federal government, you would need to declare that site where the tennis courts are obsolete, make a formal request, and then, once that happens, make it, make that piece of, that part of the property into passive recreational use, and then never sign a contract with the school as to lease that property again.
For any other reason.
And then you're completely off the hook with the federal government. So-
In 2018.
Right.
That's when the lease expires.
Yeah, okay.
And then the third one is that the town and the school district may extend the current lease past the expiration date, and then we go back to option A, which is- and then we go back to Option A, which is, then, it's kind of a combination of the both, which is you need to replace that amenity, and then the amenity goes, goes, the obligation then goes with that new amenity on a new piece of property. So, there's your...
So, it's a substitute.
The substitute parcel. That has to actually be of the same
And not already recreated on that.
Literal value.
Right.
Okay.
Finley?
And all three components, the skate park, the ice rink, and the tennis courts are all part of that grant?
No.
What is, the skating part is not?
The skating rink is, as well as the tennis courts, only.
The, the skateboarding is not?
No.
No, but it's all part of the same parcel. You can't pick and choose to do something with the tennis courts and not the skateboard. Whatever we decide to do affects the entire parcel.
So, it is part of the parcel, then?
Yes.
Not the grant?
Well, the grant isn't, but the lease agreement is.
My understanding is if the lease expires, then the school gets everything.
Okay, but I'm just trying to put my arms around the, the lease portion of land. Is it in, the skate park is part of that lease portion of land?
Yes.
Yes.
Within that same lease?
So, as I was saying, we're talking about two different things. What I just described to you is what we are able to do as far as the federal government is concerned. And what Jody is talking about are the obligations under the lease with the school district, which are two different things.
For the whole parcel.
For the whole parcel.
Right. But it said here, if the, if no new lease is signed with the school district, the perpetuity restrictions disappear, but they, meaning the school district, would also take over the entire parcel of land, parentheses, basketball courts, skateboard park, et cetera. The Merrimack School District would regain legal control of their own property. I mean, that is their property that those
Correct.
parks are on.
Correct.
Correct. Yes, Dan?
I'd like to open the discussion.
Absolutely.
I think, I think I'm in agreement, I think everybody's in agreement when I use the term that this was just a horrible deal back when, negotiated very badly, when words like "impermeability" are used. That's why. It, it locks everybody up. And so, from that day forward, the whole thing has just muddled to where it is today, because we were always bound by countless pages of rules and all that kind of stuff. In the end, I'm of the opinion, it should be always thrown back at the school property. It's their land. It should be their land. I've always said from the beginning, that's the entrance to the school. They should have control on how it looks, how it functions, all that. So, I'm in favor of Option Two, because it's the cleanest way to get out of this really bad deal of the past. And in the meantime, cooperate with the school board in any way we can, but let them know, that's, that, that's my opinion. That's where I would pick, because it's the cleanest way to get out of a bad deal. Then you can negotiate future things, like if the school board does want to keep the skate park and the basketball court, they may say to us, hey, can you town part, throw it on to your park and rec?
You can't, you can't.
You can't, I, once again, I don't care about what Washington tells me about picking up trash at a, at a street light. So, we can negotiate with ourselves. We don't have to always have to look at Washington for some kind of guidance about who goes over to pick up the trash over at one of our parks. So, that's, that's an internal policy. I'll wait for the federal government to come and tell us, you know, they'll find us, because what we did, what we did. So, that's where I stand. Thanks.
Other discussions. Tom, you look like you're going to...
No, I just think that the, that we should apply for the obsolescence designation. And when we meet with the school board, let them know that at this, at this time, we're not intending to renew the lease in 2018. In 2018, the property will revert to their possession.
Because that's already on the agenda as well. Jody?
I, well, I have a question. Don't speak for everybody, Dan. You don't speak for me. When you accept grants, there are stipulations with the grants. And this happened in the 1970s, and working together, the town and the school district, in obtaining a grant for recreational purposes for the people of the town, I don't see, I don't think it's horrible. So, but you don't, Dan, no, I'm not, you don't, you just said, I think I speak for everybody, and you don't. You don't speak for everybody. You don't speak for me.
The last 10 years isn't shameful what it's looked like?
Dan, this is my turn, this is my turn to talk. You don't speak for me when you say that. So, as far as, I've been trying to get some kind of documentation regarding, I guess the thing that I'm surprised about was that there wasn't any kind of a, there was a document referenced in all these minutes, and I know I bothered, I harassed Nancy and Eileen several months ago looking for this document about the structural integrity, because Paul had stated that there was only a three-year warranty. And I guess my question would have been, why, we have a structural engineer, I mean, we have Steve Keach, why didn't we have somebody go out there and take a look and write a report? I think that probably, that would have been to the town's advantage in not wanting to spend the money. You would have had something in writing, a report in writing, and from what I understand, I asked for it, it doesn't exist. But that's water under the bridge. As far as requesting that it be obsolete, the thing about doing that, though, is, is we have to change the tennis court area to something that's passive recreational use. Is that correct? Do I understand that?
Correct.
Okay. So, we'd have to figure out, I don't know that that's something that we would negotiate at the table with the school board, but I think that's something that we should have an idea ahead of time. I don't know if this group would come up with an idea and build consensus on something and then present it at the joint meeting, but I think that's something that we need to be thinking about. What is it that we would propose replacing the tennis courts with that would need the language in this if we got the permission to have it declared obsolete? Thank you.
Finley?
It was a bad deal. Impermeability means when our country collapses, for whatever reason, it still goes on. So, it was a bad idea. It, I just, I fear those type of, that's always our question anymore, is what,
With the consequences.
What is the consequence of taking this money? What strings are coming to it? And, and this was really unfortunate, and it's, I'm just surprised, it's so simple to bail out, quite frankly. I just couldn't even imagine, I was more wanting to just stick my head in the sand and ignore until somebody twisted my arm and I had to do something. But, I, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of the obsolescence idea. I, a park with a couple benches, I don't know what it would take. I, I mean, I do feel badly that I, I think the skate park accommodates a group of kids that aren't, you know, isn't, don't, aren't necessarily accommodating other forms of, of recreation in our town. And I, you know, that's something that I think that we will possibly have to discuss in the future. But, but, but I do see the, you know, the, I'm, I wasn't willing to spend the money that it would take to rehab this, even if, you know, with or without the research of the foundation and footing. The fact that we could only get a three-year warranty on a tennis court seemed, you know, when, you know, you could build it like a road and it would last for longer. I just, I wasn't in favor of spending that money, so...
Yes, Dan?
The report exists. I don't know why you didn't get it. I feel sorry that you didn't get it, but it was been out for several years now, and it was, it was...
Do you have a copy of it?
I did, years ago. I had it five years ago, and I was here my first year. I seen it, read it many times. We paid somebody already, to half a ton.
I've seen estimates, but I've seen no structural integrity before.
Marge was given a copy of it. The whole school board was given a copy.
No, no, they weren't, Dan. They were given, they were given copies of estimates.
All they got, all they got was the estimate. There's been no other analysis. We're basing it on conversations that we had with the contractor as to what the problems were, what the issues were, because those were the same issues that were brought in front of the Budget Committee in 1987 or 88, when they were talking about the free money to put in the lights. Okay? And the state has this money available, and we can get it to put in the lights. And I was the only dissenter of 15 for the free money, and the fact that even then, when they resurfaced it, they would only give us a three-year warranty on it.
Which should have made the question...
And that's, that's the other, you know, forget it, because, and even then, they told us that there was deficiency underneath, and so, we'd be back here in three years, and I just forget it.
If I can add, it's not just, I don't kind of spend thousands of dollars on a consultant when I can see with my own eyes, we all know, it's the ledge. The ledge is all permeates that whole property site. And that's what the tennis courts, why the cracks are there, that's why it was going to cost so much to do, is because they had to blast so much ledge out of the site.
And that was a verbal discussion.
And you can see it. You can walk and see the ledge right there, so it's...
Nancy, how do you want to move forward with an alternate proposal for the site? How would you like to handle that?
Well, first of all, I'd like a vote, a motion about what option. Then at that point, it's probably worth a discussion how we want to proceed from that. Bill, did you want to say anything? You don't have to, but, but you will.
It's an eyesore. It's a safety hazard. It's been like that for a long period of time. The times that we've met with the school district to try and find a suitable alternative that would be amenable to both parties, they've always circled back and saying, we want a tennis court there. They've brought no different ideas as to how they can use that particular piece of property to have it blend in with some of the other amenities that we have there. So, based on the choices that have been sent to tonight, I agree with the majority of my colleagues tonight that we should declare it obsolete and explore terminating the lease as of 2018, express our gratitude and thanks to the school district for letting us lease the property and for turning the property back to the rightful owner. And as the course of the council moves on, we have a skating rink there, and we have a skateboard park that I'm sure, as part of our policy discussions, will look at dismantling and moving them maybe to another part of town.
If the school board wants to.
Assuming the school board wants to, that's correct. I mean, maybe they want to accept the responsibility, and that's, that's, that's a fair conversation. But all things being considered, you know, I'm, I, I think it's, for me, I'm prepared to look at different ideas as to where we can move our skating rink. We've talked about Watson Park. We've already begun to put the infrastructure down there. And as far as the skateboard park, there's a lot of, the kids use it. I can, I am supportive of it. I want to see it in the community. It's just a question of finding a location that's central enough for the kids in the community to gain access to it. That's where I stand, and thank you for the opportunity.
Eileen?
Matt, could you come up and talk to us about the, about the skating rink? Because that was part of the grant.
Sure, and, and I'll just say, even my conversations, sorry, even my conversations with the state, I can't tell you how many phone calls and emails I've exchanged in the last six months on, just on this issue, was, it's been kind of mind-boggling, just trying to look back at 30 years and what was the law that applied back then versus 10 years later with the other one, and...
And you had to wait for an answer.
And waiting for an answer, and it was more waiting for National Park Service than, than the state.
Right.
But, where are we here? So, if, if we declare that the courts obsolete, which they've indicated that they will, they will give us that letter, obviously, that fulfills the park service's requirements through the ends of our current lease. If we, if we don't sign a new lease in three years with the school district, then the property, as I, as I understand it, and this is, you know, again, from talking to them, then the property, you know, reverts to the school district and, but the perpetuity restrictions disappear. So, they can do what they want with it at that point, and again, you know, whether it's, do they want to accept responsibility for the skateboard park or the rink, or do, would they want us to move them, or, you know, those types of things.
Yes, Emily?
We just need a little more, more clarification on the rink, because the rink was part of the grant, too. So, that, and they're not declaring that, they're not declaring that obsolete. So, some, some thought needs to go into asking that question, if you haven't already.
Well, what I'd like to do, if, if it's okay with people, could we make a decision about the option we're going to take? And then the following discussion would be, as a result of that vote, there are certain things that will have to be considered, and they probably won't be decided tonight, but will probably be part of the discussion with the school, the school board. Is that a reasonable, okay, so don't go anywhere, Matt.
Madam Chair, I would move that the town council annoyed as a matter of policy that the tennis courts be deemed obsolete, that furthermore, we request they be deemed, request they be deemed obsolete with the appropriate federal jurisdiction, that furthermore, that either Eileen and her proxy be required to sign the letter necessary to be submitted to the jurisdiction to declare said obsolescence of said tennis court.
Obsolescence.
Obsolescence, thank you. Sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Motion by Bill Boyd, seconded by Dan Dwyer. Any other discussion regarding this particular? Okay. All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, say nay. Okay, we have five yes, one no, and that no would be Counselor Ballen Court. Okay. So, based upon that decision, we are going with the second option. So, my understanding is now the discussion has to be, we have to wait for the, we have to talk to the school about how they want us to fix the site. We can do that in the meantime, right? Or do we have to wait until the declaration of obsolescence?
No, we can, we can start that discussion.
Okay, so we can talk at the school meeting, we can talk about our wish to return it to a, dismantle it, do it to a clean site. Do they have...
To passive recreation.
To passive recreation, and, you know... And what, what that entails? Just be returning it to lawn, right?
Basically, yeah. It's taking out the courts, the fence, the lights.
And the lights?
Mm-hmm. I would say so, yeah, because they're part of the courts.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. And then we'd also have to discuss, which maybe we probably don't have to now, though, because the skateboard and the rink and the, the basketball is there, too, right?
Yes, yeah.
At the end of the lease is when it would be turned over to the school. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, that doesn't even have to be decided now.
Right.
The way I understand it is if we request for it to be declared obsolete, and then we make the changes, that that brings us into compliance until it expires in 2018. That's how I understood it.
Correct. So, really, the only thing we need to absolutely talk to the school about is, one, to let them know the decision. By the way, I did notify Chris Ortega that this was on the agenda and that there was backup information explaining the options. So, hopefully, that was passed on. But really, it's a matter of notifying them of the decision and then talking to them about the passive, right? Returning it to its open space concept, right? Do we need to talk about the other issues now, or can we wait till the expiration? Good, I won't be chair that.
But two years will, two years will...
Three.
Well, no, it's almost 2016. So, 2018 is almost just two years away. That will fly by, and I really, really would be so sad to see the skate park disappear completely from town. So, and I think the skating rink, you've got an incredible group of volunteers that maintains that every year. So, I personally think, and this will fall on Matt and Eileen's lap, too, that we need to start thinking of where we're going to put those things, because I'm really hoping that the town will commit to putting them somewhere in 2018 when this expires.
Yes, Dan?
So, tell me, who's going to tell us that we can't put the skate park where we want to? In two years, five years from today?
Nobody.
Thank you. I, I don't, we're the fear that where we're going to decide where it goes.
No, I'm not afraid. It's that the town will need to commit to it, because that site will no longer be available to us.
To us, the town, or the whole town, school board, too?
It won't be available to us, and I think...
To the town.
Right, and I think at this, at this point...
The school can take it over.
They could.
Right, that's, that's my point. You're making it sound like it's inevitable that they have to be moved.
The school will, is not in the, is, they don't run parks and rec functions.
Then that would be their choice. They run, they run sports teams, they have high school basketball, they have baseball teams.
First of all, that's why it's premature.
It's all kinds of stuff.
It's a premature discussion.
It is. I just think it's really to say to everybody, oh, they now have to be moved. Really? I mean, who's, who's twisting the arm of, of our leaders, of our town, between school board and council people? and council people that say that these, these parks have to be lifted from its current sites and brought somewhere else?
But that may.
It's a direct question. Does anybody have an answer to that?
That's what I'm trying to answer.
Okay.
If you allow me. That may or may not be true. And that's why I'm saying that it doesn't have to be answered tonight because personally, there has to be an understanding of the nuances, but there also has to be a discussion with the school board too, of what is their interest before the expiration. It doesn't have to be done now, but what is the intention of the school board as we get closer to that time, 2018? They may say, we don't want to be in the business and we'll tear it down, we'll let it go by. At which point the council at that time may say, to us it's worth it, let's move it. Same thing may happen with the basketball courts. But the configuration of the town council presently and the school board council presently is not going to be the same configuration that's going to be there in two years. So it's just, to me, it's premature to discuss.
Yes, it wasn't, it's never been my intent that that skateboard park would disappear, okay? Quite frankly, it would be something that would be handed off to, to the park and rec director for him to determine if there is another suitable site or area for that, that to be placed.
And that's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
That's all I'm asking and I'm asking for planning now because two years will fly by. That's all I'm asking. And the school district in its nature wouldn't operate a skateboard park or the skating rink the way that the town runs it, Dan. It's not that they don't want to see it happen, they don't want to see it disappear, but it's not what they do, it's not the nature of their business, it's something that our Parks and Rec Department, it's a town function. So that, that's all I was asking. Thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
I guess I'm confused on the site, just if, if we're out of the lease and the obligations are all done, what clouds over our head that it doesn't stay in its current location and the town still manages it?
Because it's school district property and the school district would have to make up their mind as to whether or not they wanted to do it or have us do it for them.
Okay, so that's part of the language.
But that's another conversation.
Right. But there's nothing to prevent that from happening, that the school board would say, yeah, we, let it stay there and they sign a subcontracting lease to have somebody to run it, which would be the town.
No lease, no lease. You can have a handshake, but no lease.
Right, right. Okay.
Yeah. Don't, don't need mission creep here.
Go ahead, Finley.
I know it's not for tonight's discussion, however, I feel like it's.
Get it out of your system.
A little bit of chaos going on, so.
Really?
I think, I think you just can't have the lease. So you could have an agreement, a signed, longer-term agreement.
Oh, that's a lease.
No, you're not leasing the property, it's a property you cannot lease.
Those are the nuances we need to get an opinion of.
Okay, that's what I read in here, so, okay, then I will save that for the discussion of a future.
Yeah, I mean, those are the nuances. What are the ramifications?
Right, no lease.
What's a lease versus?
A memorandum of understanding.
You can't have a lease.
Lease, but an agreement is different.
A memorandum of understanding?
Between districts and the town, we do all, we do all the.
It's, look, look, we're getting way ahead.
Exactly.
Of where we need to be. We're imputing information or actions on a few, on future boards.
That's correct.
And future members of those things, which we should be, we ought not to be doing.
Well, that's my point.
And, you know, because things are going to change over the next couple of years.
And we don't know what will change.
And we don't know what that, what that will constitute or what it will, what it will issue. You know, so it, it's just, we're getting too far ahead.
So we're done for now. As chair, that's my decision.
All right.
How's that?
That works.
I don't do that often, do I? Okay, you might as well, it's a good thing you're there, Matt, because we're coming right up to you. So we've got the vote and, you know, we can go ahead and pursue the request for obsolescence. Okay. Next, new business donation acceptance to the Park and Recreation Department. Town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation to the Parks and Recreation Department. I'll let you give the details, Matt.
We've had, you know, several Boy Scout projects completed through Parks and Recreation in the last few months. I think it was either last month or the month before, you guys had accepted a donation from a different scout. But in this case, we have Ian Finkin, who had done the sign project at Wasserman Park, and he had obviously raised more money than he needed, ultimately needed for the project, so he wrote a check to the town of those leftover funds. So like other donations, you, you guys are being asked to accept that donation.
And he has, again, it was one, it was an Eagle Scout project.
It was, yes.
That he had completed on Wasserman Park. Yes, Finley?
Matt, I was just wondering what you thought you might be using that for, if there's any specific purpose.
We, we haven't identified a specific purpose yet. I'm kind of thinking about future maintenance of these signage and, you know, because we gotten a couple hundred dollars from the, the kayak rack that was built previously with that donation. So these combined, you know, you're talking $600 or so. So mostly I'm thinking kind of future maintenance of these things, you know, down the road where we need it.
Tom?
Are we allowed to? Here's where I'm coming from. When I, years ago, I often bring up my previous experience. They, they had a piece of land that was a Boy Scout park. They discovered that it was the, the gravel on the property met the state DOT's requirements for road projects. And they were selling off essentially the gravel and they were setting it aside for developing the park and maintenance of the park. So they set up a capital reserve fund for that. Is, are we allowed to do anything like that with this type of money when they get these excess funds to put it into something where it would be used to maintain what was put there by the project?
I think at this point, you're talking about way too little money to talk about actually setting up a capital reserve fund for $200, $300, $500. So it can be done through, you know, as an open PO or Paul can give you the specifics of the financial aspect of it, but it's such a tiny amount of money that it seems like a huge labor to, you know, move forward with putting up a capital reserve fund for it.
Fair enough.
It would go underneath a specific donation and that specific donation would stay there until we use it for that specific purpose. And both of them have given money for Wasserman Park. And they didn't specifically say what we could do for it at Wasserman Park, but it's for Wasserman Park. So the money will sit there in a, in, for lack of a better term, a savings account in the town and set aside and will be managed and put aside for the purpose of specific donation for Wasserman Park. And Matt will have to bring forward an idea for that money to be expended either in the budget. So if it's maintenance for the signs, he can bring it forward and, and we can do it. It's similar to Kids Cove, the maintenance money we got for Kids Cove. We got money for Kids Cove, that money sat aside until Matt came up and said, I need to resurface Kids Cove. And he put it in the budget and we were able to use that money to offset it.
All right, fine, okay.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Move to accept the $485.36 from Eagle Scout, Ian Finkel.
Finkin.
Finkin, I'm sorry, Finkin. And.
I'll let all of us have.
Seconded.
Motion made by Counselor Mayhoun, seconded by Counselor Boyd.
Now, set the town right, the Eagle Scout, congratulations and thanks for the contribution. Please.
That's one, those are one of the nice things I like signing.
Absolutely.
I'm sure it is.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Six zero zero.
Matt, thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, I feel, I'm cold.
Oh. Paul, we're having complaints, it's too cold.
What?
Talk to the chair.
I'm going to have to put my coat on.
Talk to the chair.
I'm having a cold flash here.
You should know to bring a sweater.
Can you check?
Can you check the temperature?
Yeah, I can read the temperature.
I mean, no, just shut off the AC, don't turn on the heat.
Well, see, after that argument over that last, the tennis court item, that heated up the room and now.
It sure did.
All the air's gone out, so now it's getting cold again.
You know what I'm thinking of right now? I'm thinking of Dave Yakupoff. He would have his computer. He'd be looking at this, right?
Yeah.
Whenever you're ready, go for it.
We are submitting to you tonight the 2015 through 2022 capital improvements plan. We are required every year to prepare a capital improvements plan that spells out the various, the various things that we need to plan for in terms of capital improvements, such as buildings, roads, bridges, and also minor type equipments like dump trucks and those kinds of things. So in order to do that, just to speak to the, the main focus of how Merrimack funds this capital, capital improvement plan, unlike many other communities, almost every other community that I've seen, Merrimack actually plans ahead and puts money aside for these major projects. They look out five years and they start setting aside money so that they will be prepared to pay cash for these things, if possible, unless it's a big building project or something, and do not need to issue bonds. And that is a very, very impressive thing. So that's kind of the basis of how Merrimack funds its capital improvement plan. We have many different capital improvement categories and we put money in to save for something that may be paid for, may be needed in three years or in four years or something like that. So we're going to start out here with, with what, what we started to do when I first got here. It was very important to me to start building up the capital reserve funds again. Several years ago, probably six or seven years ago, the amount of money that was going into the capital reserve funds was so miniscule and, and yet, a lot of money was still going out. So those funds continued to get depleted. So for instance, one year, we had 360 some odd thousand dollars going into capital reserve funds, which is totally inadequate. And then we were still spending over a million dollars per year because we still had to buy the things that we needed. Consequently, we've been trying over the past several years to build up those capital reserve funds. And this, this year that we're in right now, not the, not the one that we're presenting, we have reached the point where we're to, for the most part, putting in what we need for the year. So we put it in and we take it out. But this year, we're looking to start beefing up our capital reserve funds again. And it's been very hard to get there because as you can see, from 300 and some odd thousand dollars, we have now tried to build it up to 1.6 million dollars per year. So as I said, it's been a long road, but we've made a lot of progress. So when I first got here, we wanted to establish ourselves some minimums of, at least in terms of total dollars, for what we would deposit into capital reserve funds. And the reason why is because when somebody is going to, looking to cut the budget, that's a very easy thing to do. So if somebody says you need to cut the budget 200,000, well, take it off of roads or take it out of this or take it out of the capital reserve funds, and that's very simple. But it, it's not smart. You need to leave a place for your capital reserve deposits in the budget and you need to consider other things when you, when you go to make budget cuts because just because you're not putting money in here does not mean that these things don't need to get replaced. So at that, several years ago, four or so years ago, when I got here, we kind of said between ourselves that we will, will not go below this million dollar number. That's that estimated column there, it says estimated minimum of over 1.00, you know, 1,600,000 dollars. And then another 50 for the sewer improvement, infrastructure improvements. So, but since then, we not only have maintained that, but we are building it up so that we can continue doing the good job that we're doing, put, setting aside money for things that we know we're going to need in the future. So what you see here, I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk to you about the difference between where our minimum is and what our proposed is because the minimum was really basically just a placeholder and said, we can't, we're not going to go below that. So what I'm going to do is show you the proposed versus the, versus last year's. So we'll start with that first. One of the, one of the things that Paul needs to do is he gets these, as you know, he gets these huge spreadsheets from the department heads on the things that they're going to need in whatever, in the next, over the next actually six years. So it's the upcoming year plus five years beyond that. And they place them in whatever year that the funding, that they need them and that, that they can justify those particular things with. So each, when the department head comes in, they come in and they give, they have individual sheets of paper that say, I need a new dump truck in this particular year and why, and what I'm replacing and why am I replacing it? And, and so it all gets spread out that way. And what happens is this isn't actually the expending of the money for those items. This is putting the money aside for those items when they come, when they're needed. So we have, we have beefed up our ambulance money primarily because the ambulances are costing more money and we also had a few years ago where we only had about $12,000 in that fund. In order to cut corners, we reduced that to $12,000. Right?
Yes.
That's right. Our 20 or something. So we're building that back up again. Communications equipment, that is, relates to the police console that we've been talking about. As you know, we had set aside, we had used some of the money from 2014, 15 that was left at the end of the year to purchase one part of the, the, one component of that console for the police department communications. And we have two more years to save up for it. So, and is there something else in there?
Yeah, that also includes the fire station, has a dispatch center in their location that we're looking at, possibly replacing at the same time when we do the police communication center.
Computer, computer equipment, it stays the same. Those are basically continuing to purchase licenses. For a long time, we had no licenses at all. And DW Highway, same amount of money. We set aside $50,000 a year and every four or five years, we do a portion of DW Highway that's under, within the town's urban compact. So. So, then, highway equipment, again, highway equipment and dump trucks and that kind of thing are increasing in cost. Library building maintenance, they're, they would like to continue building up their fund so that they're able to do things. One of the things that they're looking at doing this year is to do work on their parking lot and the internal sidewalk that is there, right next to the building. And they're also saving up for key card system?
They're looking at a key card system and monitoring, and they're also looking at sprinklers and HVAC and things of that sort, which are building repairs that they're trying to save up for those in the out years.
Property revaluation, we always set aside 15,000 dollars every year, and this year, we will be doing the revaluation, as you know. Solid waste disposal, again, we normally put in 60,000 dollars in there, but last year, we didn't put that much in there because, again, we spent money to buy a truck for solid waste out of existing funds that we had at the end of 2014, 15. So, consequently, we didn't need to put so much in last year, and this year, we have to bump it back up again. And traffic signal preemption, that, those are the devices that are located at the traffic signals so that the police and fire department can preempt the signal so that they can go through the intersection. GIS, interestingly enough, this will be our last year of the 65,000 dollar allotment. It was supposed to, it was expected that it was going to be a three-year deal and that it was going to cost more, much more than we now know that it's going to cost. So, I believe the cost now is 135,000?
And that's for the flyover?
For the flyover.
Digital mapping of the town, so.
So, this will be the last allotment of money that goes in for the large amount for the GIS flyover. And then, from then on, we'll be recommending to put smaller amounts in there so that we don't get hit with a big, you know, three big years again. 600,000 dollars for road infrastructure, that includes our bridge work. You know, we've, that's one of the reasons why our Capital Reserve Funds have needed to increase over the past three years or so is because Kyle has done such a wonderful job in assisting us to get a number of bridges done over the past several years, and we've been very fortunate to have him and also to have this money. So, you have somebody like Kyle who has the, you know, who knows the people. He can prepare the plans to an extent, and we're setting aside the money. So, all those three things together make us an attractive recipient of the 80% grant money that we receive for bridges, because we're ready to go. So, then, sewer, for sewer infrastructure improvements, that's for various pieces of equipment. Mill foil, we reduce that a little bit because we have been doing work every year regularly, rather than waiting for three or four years and then all of a sudden having to come up with a big amount of money. And also, I would like to appreciate the LACE associations who are monitored, taking it upon themselves to monitor, you know, and going out on boats to see if they see mill foil, and also talking to people when they launch their boats. Look at your boat, see if you have any mill foil on your motor or those kinds of things. So, they're being very diligent about taking care of the lakes as well. So, that also helps. So, so here we get to the major general fund expenses. So, what we were talking about before was depositing money into the savings accounts, and this is taking money out of the savings accounts. And they correlate together. That's the reason why we put a certain amount of money in there, is to be prepared throughout that period of time so that we'll have enough money to do these, to pay these expenses as they come up. So, for 2016, 17, we have a bridge replacement. So, the town will be paying 545,500 dollars for our 20% of the Bedford Road over Babusik Brook project. It's a 2.7 million dollar project. The town, as I said, pays 20%, the state pays 80%, which is almost 2.2 million dollars. A little bit later on, we'll get into the bridges specifically. I think it's a good, I think it's always good to toot our horn and Kyle's horn about the bridges that we've accomplished over the past very few years. And stormwater drainage improvements, we do a little bit of that every year. I believe there's a list of those specific ones that we're going to be working on this particular year in your detail. As far as paving and infrastructure improvements, the goal, we've always had a goal of a million dollars, and we, I've always had a goal of a million dollars to say that. So, we haven't really been able to achieve that mostly because we have been putting so much money into the bridges. So, if you added all those three things together, the, what we have in the budget, and the road improvement fund, which is a $5 registration fee for 125,000 dollars, and then the road infrastructure, 20%, you're almost at a million dollars. So, you know, it's all on how you look at it. So, anyway, then I have, we have, let's see, I'm in the wrong year again. Okay, so, we have the Sauhegan River Trail. That is our portion of the grant that we received to go under the sluiceway of the Chamberlain Bridge and do that trail project. Amazing. So, the state, again, it's an 80, 20 grant, so the 150,000 dollars is our 20% contribution to that project. Then, we have.
Which was, which I think was, it's important to note that we were going to spend that 150 anyhow.
Exactly.
Actually, we would spend it more.
Yeah. For the sidewalk project over the bridge, and we perish the bridge itself. As you know, you see by the pictures in your packets, and you can see when you're driving by, there's big, huge steel sheets.
Plates.
Yep. Steel plates, just so that people don't fall into the, on that sidewalk. So, we're able to, we're able to, or I should say, again, Kyle, I'm glad you're here tonight, Kyle, that he prepared this grant, and we were able to incorporate things that we were going to do anyway, including that sidewalk repair into this grant whereby the state will pay 80%. We missed one. Parking lots, the library wants to do pass cars and secure.
The library is looking to repave their parking lot and doing some work.
I'm sorry.
Corrective work around the building, what they call the walkway or their sidewalk around their building. They need to do some repair work there, and they're estimating to be about 45,000 dollars to get their parking lot repaved and the sidewalk done.
But if you just bear with me. So, I try not to focus too much. I try and spend my focus on what's going to, what we're looking to happen in this upcoming year, but it's also important to take a look at some of the other things that are coming up, which is what we're saving for. We still have, we keep moving the fire station project out. It's still on there. 650,000 dollars is still there. And the 200,000 dollars we have is from a donation, but it's for a different fire station, right?
No, that's a Capital Reserve Fund for construction of a new fire station.
We combined two Capital Reserve Funds about six years ago. We used to have a South Fire Station Building Fund and a Northwest Fire Station Building Fund. About six years ago, the town decided to pour out to combine the two of them. What we're doing is about 250,000 dollars when we combine the two of them. What we're doing is we're using 200,000 dollars of the Capital Reserve Fund and then bonding the remainder.
Okay.
I can't see that in that spreadsheet.
It's up at the top in 2018, 19.
Okay. Our problem is I can barely read.
You gotta wear those glasses.
And I have them, I just forgot to bring them in, so, thank you.
I'm having a hard time reading it from here. So, anyway, nothing else unusual except that, in terms of major projects, except for the bridge replacement, which is projected to be in 2018, 19. I keep saying this, but I have to say it again. Kyle was able to secure us federal funds to pay for some of these, and we were running up against the limitations on the state budget because they would only budget maybe 8 million dollars a year, and they certainly wouldn't be giving 2 or 3 million to us every year. So, some of these projects will actually be getting federal funds so that we could actually get them done. So.
Question?
Yes, Dan.
You don't mind if we ask a question while, as you're going through the list, right? When you go back up to number one, it says, when it says, "South Fire Station, 3,105,000", where's the 3 million, where's that marker come from?
It came from a long time ago, before I was here.
It's just been like a number, a placeholder, so to speak?
Yeah, we just keep it for a placeholder. We haven't done any real work. We haven't done any, you know.
I just couldn't remember where that number had popped up from.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
It's just a placeholder.
Okay, so, you have the bridge replacement of, over DW Highway and Babusik Brook in 18, 19, which, again, as I said, 80%, I believe this is federal, and our portion is 500 and something thousand dollars.
4,000.
4,000. And then, let's see what else we have in here.
In combination with that US 3 bridge, which is by the MYA building, Wire Road intersection. So, we've pushed that Wire Road intersection project off to coincide with when we're doing the road, that we do it all at once.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, Dan.
I thought, didn't, a year or two ago, didn't Rick say that they did an engineering study and it wasn't enough room, and that the roundabout at Wire Road was like, not going to happen in it?
There won't be a roundabout, but it doesn't mean that the intersection can't be improved.
Okay, so, well, I saw the roundabout picture in the packet, so that's just an old photo, it's referencing, okay, so.
There's no roundabout.
Okay, all right.
Well, no, there will be no roundabout. So, we, again, pushed the highway garage out another year so that we can, you know, be better prepared to bring it forward again so that it hopefully will satisfy the questions and concerns of the people.
When's the bond done?
One of the bonds is done in 2017, 18. And the other one is 2023. But they were very, very small bonds. It still amazes me to see how, there's two bonds, two tiny bonds that the town has, and it's just amazing, and it says so much for the, you know, frugality and the, you know, setting aside money. You don't have to pay interest on it, it's just, it's just a really wonderful system. So, that's another big one. The other big, the other, let's see, then we have a sewer line extension, which is the next one. As you know, we did a sewer extension survey or study, and the first one, we've just completed, and we've completely run out of money because we had 800-and-some-odd thousand dollars in the kitty, and that's what that cost, Sunset Shores. So, the next one on the list that we needed to do per this study is Mayflower and McQuestion Sewer Basins. Is that what it says?
Yes.
Okay. So, those are, that would need to be a bond. So, here, those are, and then, we have placeholders for new athletic fields, as we always do, same amount of money. The new library, again, we push that, all that stuff down to the end until we're prepared to discuss it further. But it just, we place those two things specifically in there because we know that it's something that's coming up, and we have to keep, we have to keep our eye on that ball. So, they're just sitting there as a placeholder. So.
Yeah, now, the sewer projects, those were anticipated in the sewer study, so that money has been accumulating over time. No?
As, from what I understand, when, that the, the town had an agreement with Ann Harzer Bush that sewer extensions would not be paid for out of the sewer fund, and that they would be paid for out of the general fund through Capital Reserve Funds.
Okay.
So, we have not been saving for them. And we did, we were saving for them, but the first one that we did took out almost, we had almost a million dollars, and that first one that we did cost a million dollars or 800-and-something thousand dollars. Yeah. So, we have not been saving for it.
Okay.
Right?
Right. We don't have any more. We don't have, we have very limited amount of money in the Capital Reserve Fund for the sewer extension fund. So, when this project came in, it's definitely 2.3 million dollars. We have tens of thousands of dollars in it, so that's why we're looking at a bond for this project.
Say the project again.
It's a sewer line extension from Mayflower and McQuestion Road Sewer Basins.
Okay.
Remember, the last time we tried a bond sewer, it was a while ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, 1991 or 1992.
But wasn't that for most of the town?
That was for, that was to implement the entire plan, and the price then was 30 mil, 30 million. Resoundingly, as they say, DOA.
Well, the difficulty is, though, you have people who are connected to sewer who won't be with this 2 million dollars, and getting them convinced that it's a good idea for the town is different.
That's right. But there was another vote.
In 1991.
I think there was another vote that wasn't the 30 million, though. There was an extension, I believe, if I remember correctly, which is what you're probably thinking of. It got voted down.
No, actually, I think I was thinking of what Tom speaks to.
Okay. Because I thought there was another one.
It was a lot of money, yeah.
Maybe I.
The town manager at the time said, "This is crazy, we ought to do it all at once and get it done." Yeah, and brought the 30 million, bought a 30 million dollar, I looked, I went, "No, this isn't going to work, Dan, you know, it's not going to."
It was at a whole town meeting.
Okay, so, this slide is a consolidation of the various sources of funds that would be used to pay for the projects that we just described, and we're just talking about the major projects. We'll then get in. And we're just talking about the major projects, we'll then get into the minor projects. So all along, during this period of time, we've been talking about the major projects. So, in two thousand sixteen seventeen, we anticipate using eight hundred and forty thousand dollars from the capital reserve funds, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the municipal budget, which is for road infrastructure improvements. Again, that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, again, for road improvements that comes from that five dollar fee that's added on to the, that's added on to the motor vehicle permits. And the state aid that we're gonna receive for the bridge, bridges, for the bridge and for the, for the, the South Heagan River Trail to combine comes to two point six million dollars. So, that's what's, that's what is going to be proposed for this year. And next year, you, you see some bonds in here in the future years. The one for sixteen, for seventeen eighteen is for the highway garage. The one for eighteen nineteen is for the fire station. And the one for nineteen twenty is for the sewer extension. And eight million is for those, for the athletic fields and for the library. So again, those all need to be approved, but that's what we have, you know, that's what we have in there for either placeholders or something so that, so it's always in your, in your face kind of thing. So, then you see the, you know, you also see the state aid in eighteen nineteen, that's for, that second bridge over Babuzik Brook, Route Three and Babuzik Brook. And it also shows, as I said before, the fire station. So again, I'd like to recap the bridge projects again, 'cause it's, it's something that we should be really proud of. So, over the course of, since two thousand and eight, and we also added the US Route Three across DW highway that we were just talking about that won't be occurring until two thousand and nineteen, but we wanted to throw that in there too. So, because we've received not a, not a commitment, but a, a, not a promise, but a commitment from the federal government that that will be in the, in the list, on the list. So, so over those number of years, we have done sixteen million four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars worth of bridges and bridge work. And the town has paid two million seven hundred and seventy thousand of that. And the rest has been paid by either the federal government with the Turkey.
Turkey Hill Road Bridge.
Road Bridge with the affordable, the air.
ARRA funds.
ARRA funds, I don't remember what the acronym means anymore.
American Resource Recovery Funding.
Oh, really? I think you're making that up. So, anyway. Okay.
I thought it was American Recovery Reinvestment Act.
Yes, it is. You're both wrong. Finley's right. So.
But that was nice, sticking up for Tom, I'm very impressed, Paul.
Yeah, you're both wrong and you're both swear to it. So, so anyway, I think, again, I just think it's very impressive and I think that while these are, projects are ongoing, it's important to, you know, bring this to everybody's attention that we've, that a lot has been accomplished in terms of bridges. And I would venture to say that nowhere else in the state has, has anything like this been accomplished to this extent.
Right, well, Kyle and I have been told that this is the most aggressive bridge projects in the state of New Hampshire. And it's, it's interesting, every time they came to us and say, "Do you have the money?" "Yeah, we have the money, we'll put, we'll get the money, we'll make sure the money's there." "If you're gonna pay your eighty percent, we'll make sure our twenty percent is there, so."
'Cause we've been saving it.
Because we've been saving for them, so.
Well, we also, with the Turkey Hill Road Bridge, that came in way under the estimate. We really got lucky on that one.
That hit at the perfect time.
Yeah. Well, that's why you put the money aside, so that when you get that economic downturn, you can take advantage of the, you can take advantage of the, of the economies that you get when that happens.
But I think you're right, I don't think we can underestimate Kyle's impact on this. His knowledge and his ability to follow through and it's not just knowing people, it's knowing how. And the timing is great and we have, the, all of the forces worked together to be able to be, have, have the response we did and Kyle was one of those big pieces. So again, thank you, Kyle. We appreciate what you do, believe me.
So.
And we just wanna make sure the public knows about it too.
Right. So, here, here's one of the major projects that's planned to be done for this year. I think it's important for you to see what the Bedford Road Bridge looks like. It's, again, one of those culvert type bridges that have, have deteriorated. As you recall, this past year, we were given a letter that said, "Close that Bean Road Bridge today." And we had to close it. So, that was another culvert type of bridge and they just deteriorate over time. So this, the, the plan for this new bridge will not be a culvert, but I don't know how, it's a multi-plate arch steel pipe that has a twenty-one year span.
Foot, twenty-one foot span.
That's what's in there currently.
Yes.
Is the one we're gonna use similar to what we saw on Bedford Road, the concrete formed pieces?
The wire road.
Wire road.
Yes.
The man knows what we're gonna be doing.
And here for your pleasure is Kyle Fox.
The man of the hour.
It's on, you just talk and they bring it.
Okay. The, the Bedford Road Bridge Replacement will actually be quite a large bridge. I think, if I recall, it'll be about a seventy-foot span. What, what we're doing on that project and why it costs so much is you see the bottom two pictures in the, the slide there, that's from the May two thousand six flood. We also lost the road in April of two thousand seven. So as part of the project, we're actually increasing the elevation of the road in that low point. What that does is in flood conditions, it pushes all the water that would go over the road through the structure. So the structure has to have a much wider span to, to accommodate that extra flow.
Is it gonna be similar though to the construction of Turkey, not Turkey Hill, Bedford Road Bridge?
On Joppa, at Joppa Road.
At Joppa, yeah.
No, that's a conspan arch bridge, those are fairly short spans. It'll be a steel beam with, with concrete deck, most likely. Yep.
Thanks, Paul.
Sure.
Stormwater drainage improvements. It gives you a list of the, the anticipated projects for the fifteen sixteen construction season. Joe Allen Drive, Amherst Road, Brenda Lane, Wilson Hill Road, Waterville Drive, Thornton Road West and various townwide basin repairs. Paving and infrastructure improvements. I'm always wanting to, them to add sixteen to the mix, but they never will do it for me. So, what we wanted to do is show you here what has been accomplished over the past several years. So, if you could just go back to the, the next one, go to the next one, Paul. So we went back to two thousand and ten, eleven, twelve so that you could see all of the, the things that have been accomplished in terms of paving and then go, go back again. And this is what has been done in fourteen, that was what is done in two thousand and fifteen. And we are currently going out to bid for prices on paving. And it depends, we can't specifically say which roads will be done until the.
When we get the bid, it's the price per ton for the asphalt, the price for moving structures. We have to take that all into account. Kyle and his group of engineers and interns, mostly interns, come in and they look at the PCI and develop, these are the roads that need to be paved. And we, Kyle goes down and starts looking at saying, "Okay, I got this much money to spend, this is how much it's gonna cost me for this road, this is how much it's gonna cost me for that road," through the PCI and works the worst road.
Pavement Condition Index.
Which is the criteria by which they make a determination.
That's great. And then they come down and where the money stops is where the roads stop. So it's, it's kinda hard to project which roads are there.
It helps to prioritize.
Right, and it's very difficult too, because if you put up the, and this is, these are calendar year projects. So, if you put up the two thousand and sixteen road projects and there wasn't enough money or to, you know, to finish them, or the budget got cut, or the bids came in low, then there's people out there anticipating that their road's gonna be done and it's, might not be done, so. The South Heagan River Trail Project, we've talked about that at length already. And preliminary design of this project will begin in late two thousand and fifteen with construction expected for two thousand and seventeen. Okay, so here are the minor projects and these are the expenses. So, as we're putting money into the various capital reserve funds, which we already talked about as well, at the very beginning, they're all kind of combined together, the money that we've put into the capital reserve funds. And this is, these are some of the mi- minor project expenses that we anticipate expending and a few years out so you can see some of the, some of the larger or anomaly type of things. So, the revaluation, as we know, is gonna be done. That's coming from the capital reserve fund because we've saved for it. Communications, radio base station, that whole project for the police department will be completed next year, not, yeah, not this upcoming year, but the, the year after. So we will have saved enough money to get that accomplished, that whole thing accomplished. The fire dispatch station and radio base stations, can you explain that one?
That is, we, it's, it was in the budget. We put it out when we were, we were sitting there and talking with the person who's handling the project at the police department, we brought up the, the dispatch at fire and that's why it's in italics and yellow. It's really a placeholder that they'll all be done at the same time. We're working with the vendor to get a, a better price on how much that will be to do it. And it's all gonna come out of the communication capital reserve fund.
But, but it won't actually be spent this year.
Right.
So, that's why it's in yellow. So, the GIS will be able to be completed with a flyover this year, which as we have seen, by having to look at the maps repeatedly and having them done over and over and over again, the more information and data that we have and more up-to-date information that we have, the better our maps are, which as we can, we've seen this year, are very valuable to us for a whole bunch of different reasons. So, then we have, the fire department is looking to do some, some of the things that we did here at town hall, are in the process of doing here at town hall, which is a key card system for their station as well as security cameras. So that, again, that will be in next year's, not this upcoming year's budget, but next year's. Do you have a question, Finley?
Uh, no, it's something I could ask later, I'm just.
Okay, so, the, the SCBA equipment, the emergency breathing apparatus equipment that we've been talking about for a while now. Brian Bornhaman, Assistant Chief Brian Bornhaman has applied for a grant for this project and we missed it by two points this past year, so we didn't get the grant. This allotment of eighty-two thousand dollars is money that we're setting aside for three years in, in anticipation that we will not get the grant. So this would pay for all of the, the self-contained breathing apparatus that's needed by the, the fire department to replace virtually on its way to being obsolete equipment, which it isn't yet, so I don't want anybody to think that anybody's in danger or anything. So, so anyway, Assistant Chief Bornhaman will be applying for the grant again this year and he will have the opportunity to apply for it one more time after this year. So, I'm not sure when he gets the results of that, but regardless, we will have enough money in the account to pay for our portion, whatever that, that portion is. There's usually a matching part and I don't know, it's maybe seventy-five, twenty-five or.
Yeah, I think if we get the grant, our matching portion's the forty-four thousand dollars.
So, but anyway, we're, we're continuing to put the eighty-two thousand dollars aside so that we can be sure that at the end of year three, we will have the money, whether we get the grant or not, 'cause it's critical. So, we are looking to purchase a forestry truck. As you probably, as you probably know or have, have seen in the various reports that you've been getting from the fire chief, that there are surprising a number of brush fires in town. Some, some of them really big. So, they need a forestry truck. We talked about potentially getting a used one, 'cause it seems very expensive, but they are typically used very hard. So, when another community has used theirs, it's really beaten up because it's been through the brush and it's been through the, you know, woods and all that kinda stuff. So, the one that we're looking to replace is the nineteen eighty-eight vehicle. So we've gotten our money's worth out of that one. So, and the other thing that they're looking to do is to replace a nineteen ninety-four inflatable boat.
Boat in a bag.
Boat in a bag, that's right. It's called a boat in a bag. So, what it is, we, so we currently have two boats. One is a regular boat, I don't know what, how you describe it, but a regular boat.
It's one that goes on a boat trailer that has to go get launched from a boat launch. It's the easiest way to describe it.
And the other one is four guys can take this thing and take it out of the bag and open it up and off they go. So this one is from nineteen ninety-four and we can, we need a new one. And that costs fifteen thousand dollars. Thermal imaging cameras, again, very new technology is continuing to, is continuing to improve. And the thermal imaging cameras, as we know, many years ago, when they first came out, it was an amazing invention that saves so, has saved so many lives over the years. So, you know, the, the firefighters can actually see people from their, from their heat, their body heat, where they, where they're located in case somebody has, you know, in case someone's asphyxiated or unable to get out of the building, they know that they're there. So, we have, there is, there are going to be allotments of forty thousand dollars for three years, which would give them a total of six, six thermal imaging rescue cameras, one on the rescue truck, three on, one on each pumper and one on the ladder. Right?
Yes.
So, then we have, again, these are just, you know.
Do you have a chronic reader board, before I turn my page, I didn't know if you spoke to that?
Uh, we're, oh, the reader board.
That was similar to a sign to go in front of the, front of the station, the station by the Chamberlain Bridge, similar to what we got at the police station with the sign, you know, Merrick Fire and then they light up, read a, digital reader board underneath it.
Okay.
And where is that located? And where is that located?
It's line number eight.
Line number eight. So, oh, so that's for the following year. And I haven't been completely convinced that that is necessary to that extent, to, to be that expensive. As we've talked about before, as we're doing these bridge projects, we're trying to get them to throw in one of these reader boards, you know, to direct, to direct traffic and that kind of thing. So, so we're, we're trying to accumulate more reader boards because as we know, there are certain times when we really need them. So these are just, you know, you have a replacement for, for a mower, a six-wheel dump truck that, for the highway department, replacing a 2002 vehicle, a $125,000 for a utility vehicle, which is smaller than a, than a dump truck, for, to replace a 2005 vehicle.
That utility vehicle that they're replacing is one of the sidewalk machines. To do the sidewalk, to remove the sidewalk, the snow during the winter time during the sidewalk. In the summertime, it's used to cut the slope at the landfill.
Which one is that, Paul?
That is item, that's the utility trailer, item number 24. So that's used to cut the, the hill, the old closed landfill. It has to cut, we have to keep that slope clean as part of our agreement with, with the, the money going back and forth that we got to close the dump, the dump at the time. The other thing that it does, it cuts around some of the guardrails.
Is there a special mower for that at one time or...
That, that is, and that mower, that's that utility vehicle right there.
Oh.
So, yeah, we did buy, it was a special mower, but it had all these attachments. They're looking to get another one to replace that one because that one is getting old and it's getting very, very expensive to repair. It's almost in the repair shop weekly.
Okay.
So then we have, we have patrol vehicles. This is for three police vehicles, the, the new SUV vehicles that we're now purchasing. So I believe that we try and do three in one year and four in the next, or is it three?
It's three, it's three, three, four.
Three, three, four. So this is a three-year, three.
Finley is first and then Dan.
Actually, I noticed this year for the first time, I realized that we are buying all SUVs. I was wondering what the cost difference is and...
And why, with the purpose?
And I, I have an idea why, I mean, I'm, the answer I'm expecting, so I'm just curious.
I'll try to give you the best answer because I asked that question too. What I was told is not so much the price, price difference is about $2,000 for the vehicle.
That's it?
That's it. The reason why is they're bigger vehicles. And when you get in and out with some of the, when you have your gum belt on and you have your vest on, and if you have a winter coat on or things of that sort, it's very difficult to get in and out of those doors, the front doors, with, with the steering wheel and things of that sort. So with the SUV, it gives them a little bit more room to get in and out of, of the front doors. And it gives, it gives the, if they have somebody in the back, it gives them a little bit more room also, so they're not right up on the backseat and kneeing the policeman as he's trying to drive them back to the station in cuffs. So that's why they're going with SUVs. The mileage is the same, maybe a mile or two different, but the mileage is the same. They're all-wheel drive, so it's a lot better than the old Crown Vix where they were rear-wheel driving in a snowstorm, they were all over the road. These are all-wheel drive and they're able to drive in all, all conditions. But the price difference is about two grand different to, to get them, to get them up and on the road.
I am surprised.
I think the, it's 27 versus 25.
Yep.
Dan, do you have a question?
And that's why we're going, we're going to SUVs. And eventually, the goal is in the next three to five years, that as those cars come out of service from the police department, they'll be passed down and we'll be totally rid of the Crown Vix in the town.
All right. And for, not for tonight, but I would be curious on the mileage difference.
Yeah, I, I have the spec sheets in the office, so I can get that.
Thanks.
I'll say, okay.
So again, $30,000 and $40,000 a year for catching up with our Microsoft licenses.
It's not that we didn't have license, we had, we had software that didn't require license, is that correct?
No.
Oh, I shouldn't have asked that out loud.
It was a little bit of both.
Okay.
We had some very old 2000 software that we were using. These are to get us more up into the 2007, 2010 Microsoft licenses. And there were some licenses that we were using multiple, on multiple machines because they weren't being used at the same time. That we're correcting that issue now, so that we're getting the licenses up to date on all the machines.
Yeah, it's per computer versus a group.
Correct.
Something else that I wanted to point out that I didn't see as we were going through here, that we were just kind of hit, that just kind of came up, up on us, was that the police, the fire department is going to need all new radios. So I'm not sure where that shows up as far as expenses go, but it's going to add a lot. I think it's about $300,000. And we are still arguing back and forth about how many they need. They're saying 75.
Charging one while one's used?
No, it's for, it's for all kinds of things. One on the, one on a vehicle, people on callback, people for, who are coming from mutual aid and the, the volunteers and the, the temporaries and, and call people.
Call people. And what, what they were doing is, with their, it's in the 18, 19 year because that's supposedly end of life on these radios. Basically meaning that Motorola is not going to support them anymore in 18, 19. So we don't have year three, but if we had year three, they would be out there in year three for, for 18, 19. Like Eileen said, we're trying to get more information about the total number of radios. How much do they cost and what do they really, do they just need the radio? Do they need the charging stations? What do they need with these radios? Do they need new holsters, new straps? So we're trying to get a better feel of, of what's, what's there. And the gentleman who actually did get some of the bid work has been sick the last couple of days.
But I just wanted to point out to you, it's, it's an anomaly that, you know, we expect to, you know, be paying for, for, or setting money aside for, for a while. So the reason why Jim Taylor is here, other than the fact that he's fascinated by these meetings, is that...
I can tell they're just thrilled.
We are now here to talk about the wastewater minor projects and I thought that it would be best for him to explain what some of these things are because I don't know what an MAU for compost building thing means. So rather than learn all that, I asked my friend Jim to come and explain all this. So you can take my seat.
Well, he's coming up, I did have one last question. The utility vehicle, number 24, Paul.
Yes.
Is that the snow blower?
Yes, that's the whole.
Okay, but down we have a landfill slope mower, what's that? Because that's 45 grand.
That, that, it's, this is a very interesting piece of equipment. Basically, it's remote control. So a guy can sit at the bottom of a hill, because there are some parts of the slope that we cannot get with this machine, but a gentleman can sit at the bottom of a hill and remotely control and it goes up and down. So you're not on a machine tipping it over, things of that sort. We're looking at this a little closely when it came up. We had the utility vehicle in there and we talked to our highway operations, Lori Barrett, about what she's doing with that. Then we talked to Steve and this was something that we put in there. It's in the out year so we can research it more and see if it's something we really need or can we contract the areas we cannot get and deal with, and what is the payback? So we pushed it out a year to do some more research on it and, and get better information on it. I saw a demo on it about two years ago and it is fascinating, but it is like playing with, you know, the kids playing with their Xbox and PS4s because you're using, you're using a joystick and you're driving the thing all over the place, cutting it.
Like, what, they cut that, the rumble?
It's a, it's a land-based drone.
Yes, exactly.
They just put some boards on, just let it go on its own.
Absolutely.
Contemplate goats.
I wish we could. Neighbors might get upset with the smell of them. Please get me out of this.
So what would you like to know? Okay, starting line one, manhole sewer line rehabilitation. We fund this every year to essentially go out and take care of structures. The town has approximately 1,500 manholes. We have 90 miles of sewer line in the town. So as you can imagine, they deteriorate at different rates depending on the age. So we always fund that, that, at that level. It seems to be adequate to take care of that on an annual basis. Going down, as you know, we're finishing up compost building rehab project. The structure itself took more money than we had anticipated, but we're getting actually a better product out of it. We're completely replacing all of the roof panels. It's going to have essentially a brand-new roof, new pearlins that support the roof, all-new bolts that had corroded. That's all being replaced among other improvements. So the makeup air units are actually two large gas-fired heating units. Because of the conditions inside the building, there's a lot of moisture. So essentially you have to temper the air, the cold air a little bit, just provide just enough heat. So not really trying to heat the building, just trying to provide an environment that it doesn't, it's not fogged in all the time. That's what that funding is for. The emergency generator, we have a pump station at Penetrauck Square that takes in 424 homes in, in Merrimack and we actually pump that wastewater to the city of Nashua. We have an intermunicipal agreement. So that is to replace a 1982 emergency generator. If we lose power, you have to have backup power out there. The camera van, this was a van that we actually got from, I think it came from MVD. It was a used van that we modified to provide camera equipment so that we can take a look at the sewer lines to check on condition. It's essentially rusted out at this point. That's the main issue with it, so we're proposing to fund that next year. Overhead door replacements, you'll see there's, there's several in there. Again, out at compost, we have approximately eight, well, we have eight overhead doors and we're looking at, we've had a lot of issues with that. So we're looking at a watertight enclosure-type opener to prevent so much maintenance and expense from going into that. Continuing on down, the cross-country project sewer recovery, that's been ongoing for the last four or five years. We initially started with a survey. We've gone and hired a contractor, so we've cleared all of the overgrown easements. And this is where sewer lines that are not in streets, but we have easements so that we can go out and maintain those systems. Hypochloric pumps, it's just wear and tear. They're now over 25 years old, we're looking to replace those. Front-end loaders, it's just a regular schedule to replace the tires on those units. Again, there's some overhead doors we're looking to work at. The treatment plant fence line, that's, that's become overgrown. Part of that is along the railroad line, so you have to have a flagger out there and that's an added expense that we have to incorporate in there. And then we have three CAT 938 loaders for the compost operation. And that's something, I think they're 2006, but it's just the environment they work in. It's, they really, they don't lift a lot of weight, but they, they do take a beating just from the compost and the moisture and, and that, that process out there. And similar to the Bobcat Skid Steel loaders, that's what we use to actually load the compost base out in the facility. And tried to make it brief, so. We have two, yeah.
And I know you look at the tires and you say $12,000. These are, these are big tires. They're not your normal, you know, 13-inch wheels.
I assume that.
These are, these are definitely very big tires and they cost a lot of money because of what's going on with rubber and the price of rubber and petroleum products. And that's why they're there. The other thing I wanted to mention is that just because all these items are on this minor use capital reserve projects, doesn't mean that it's, it's user fee. So whoever uses the sewer is really, is paying for this. We have set some money aside, but just because it's on here, you might not see it in the section of the budget when it comes to capital purchases. Some of these items might be like, the overhead doors are really a maintenance item. So those might be up in the maintenance area or the tires might be in the maintenance of vehicles or things of that sort. But because of the way we talked about our minor projects and our projects, that's why they're on these sheets and being users, you're not, you're not going to see a different color than fuchsia because it's all coming out of the same pot of money.
Purple.
Purple. You're not going to see a different color than purple. Because it's coming out of the user, it's coming out of sewer fund, which is a enterprise fund, so.
Does it need to be launched for now and get our different budget numbers to be presented differently too?
It, it, these could be presented differently, but it will still total to $313,000.
Only in the sewer.
Only in the sewer fund. In the other funds, those will be presented the way they're presented. And it's because of the lack of colors that I could use on these spreadsheets without going nuts.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we have...
You are relieved.
So again, as, as Paul was just explaining that last slide...
Oh, you need the, there you go.
As Paul was just explaining, that last slide actually comes from sewer user fees. So we have a fund set up where all the money that people pay when they pay their sewer bills, all that money goes into a separate fund and it pays for all of the, the staff and the, the operations of the wastewater treatment facility. So this is another user fee category, which is the media department. So the media department, their funding comes from the cable franchise fee and that number is getting larger and larger and our expenditures are not really increasing. So as of the past, we used to put all of the money from the capital franchise, capital...
People are turning over to digital, people are getting more receivers. Our percent is still the same, but there's more services that are demanding it and it's based on the price, so.
Was it 4%?
Yeah, 4%, it's gone from like...
Well, look at your bills.
Last June, it was nine, we received $92,000. I just received the one for the first quarter through September. It was 90, almost $97,000. So it's, and usually around Christmas time, it even goes up higher because people are buying more HDTV's and more TVs with, with different options and things. So it will go up, it'll keep, it expands.
So what we've been doing for the past three years is to use some of this money to offset general fund expenditures because there is no sense in accumulating money into a fund that is adequately, already adequately funded. So these are some of the things that Nicholas is looking at doing, which is basically to keep up with technology and keep his equipment current.
So what's the low-power FM equipment? All the way at the bottom.
That, Nicholas mentioned that, that's to start broadcasting with live stream. That's the start of, of starting to look at live-streaming broadcasting.
Okay, thank you.
That's the start of looking at live-streaming broadcasting.
Because those people who don't have cable can watch these live, but if you have this capacity, you can do it with the computer. Oh, then we can really be live-living.
And, and to do, and to do...
Now we're only half live.
Well, we're going to get HD cameras too in here, so.
Oh, I look forward to that. Does it have a photoshopping capability?
Yeah, that's it, the house of mirrors.
My mother claims there's no difference. High-deft rig.
So, so again, we're doing a summary of where the funding sources are coming from.
Light.
Again, we're doing a summary of the minor projects of, and where the money is coming from for those. So, in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars will be coming from the capital reserve funds. A hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars will be coming from the general fund budget. The user fees this particular year that we're projecting are three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars for the minor projects and fifty thousand dollars, as we just showed you, for cable franchise fees. So, we'd like to give you a summary of what's going on with the capital reserve funds and what kind of funds we have and how much money we have in them. You can see, let me see. What am I missing here?
At the beginning of July first, two thousand and fifteen, the beginning of the fiscal year that we are currently in, we had three-point-six million dollars.
Oh, that's not what my point was. My point was, there was a point where we were not putting a lot of money into the capital reserve funds. Where is that? Oh, it's, it's back for other years. These are, these are just, these are just three years, okay? So, what you're seeing here is that we went a couple of years back, forward. So, at the end of last year, we had approximately, in the, the funds for the general fund, we had three-point-six million, almost three-point-seven million dollars, made up of various kinds of capital reserve funds, and you can see the listing of them there. We put into the capital reserve funds, this, we will be, we put into the capital reserve, I'm getting my ears mixed up. We put into, we're in fifteen, sixteen now, so we put in one-point-four million dollars into our capital reserve fund to add to our, you know, basically our bank accounts. And we expended one-point-five million dollars from the capital reserve funds. And that is what I was kind of saying to you, is that this current year, we're kind of putting it in and taking it out. And the reason why we increased the amount of money, even, even though it's just a couple of hundred thousand dollars, into the capital reserve is so that we stop, that we start actually setting money aside instead of putting it in and taking it out in the same year. So, at the end of this fiscal year, we anticipate having three-point-five, almost three-point-six million dollars again, plan to put in one-point-six million dollars, which is a couple of hundred thousand dollars more than we did last year, as I was just explaining, and spending one-point-five million out of it for the various projects that we already discussed. And those are a combination of the large and small projects. So, and then, so at the end of two thousand and six, two thousand and seventeen, we will have, again, a similar balance, three-point-six million dollars, and we'll be budgeting another larger amount, another hundred thousand dollars in there, and spending two-point-two million dollars, which is primarily for the communications equipment that shows. That's the big one that is, as I said, an anomaly. It's not gonna happen every year. So, at the end of June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, we should have three-point-two million dollars in our capital reserve funds. So, we also provided for you some detail on the other projects, so that you can, you can take a look at those. But I think it's most important to look at what we're doing right now and looking ahead of just a few years. But you have six years' worth of detailed information on each of the projects that are, are part of this whole plan of putting money in and taking money out.
Dan?
Going back on that, you had the Merrimack River ramp project. So, are you saying at this point, the way you're presenting the budget, that you're putting money aside? I think it was fifty thousand dollars for that road improvement leading to the Merrimack River ramp? Or is that just like a placeholder that you're, it's gonna be up for debate this upcoming budget season? And the way you're looking at me, it's like you don't know what we're talking about.
Or they don't know what, they don't know what you're talking about.
What's the dollar amount of that?
Fifty thousand if they went with gravel roadbed versus the sand, which is why the road's so bad, 'cause it's just too silty.
And I, I think what it is too, is that a few years ago, as far as the Griffin Street boat launch specifically, it had been.
Talked about, but not really.
Discuss by, kind of by consensus, that we would set money aside with the anticipation of the state. I know Tom's laughing, contributing a portion as well.
But it can't, to be fair, the state say they won't really enter discussion until there was like a usable road to get there. I believe that was how it went.
They don't have any money.
Right. Well, whether they do it or it's conjunction on us, it's just something that we had talked about as one of our things to do. Whether we do or not, my main question was, the way I'm reading it, was the money, are you taking that money and putting it into the budget as a project to actually do?
Not in the sixteen, seventeen budget that we're presenting. That, that's in our out-year seventeen, eighteen. So, are we, are we putting away a little bit of money in the capital reserve deposits for that? Yes. That'll be when we look at the seventeen, eighteen budget and bring forward, if that project through DPW, if they still think that project is, is necessary for that year and bring it forward, then there'll be the discussion with the town manager and move forward to the town council at that point.
The reason I've been chuckling is, the reason I was chuckling was because this is something that's been dealt with over the last twenty years.
And I suspect it's time to get off the dime, 'cause it is, it is a gem out there.
It's, that's kind of my point. Like, one of the things that, you know, we've seen, a lot of us do over the years is, you know, put our money where our mouth is when it comes to certain stuff. Wasserman Park's the biggest example. And maybe this council this year decide, I would just say directly to your comment, Tom, is because councils of the past never got the gumption to go do something about it. And whether we do it this year or not remains to be seen, but.
And I, I think to be, you know, to be fair about all that, there were, you know, there were very, there were some very, very lean years. And all that, all of those kinds of things, quality-of-life types of things ended up falling out of the budget. So, hopefully, as we move forward, we can get some of those things, because obviously, quality of life is one of the most important components of living in Merrimack.
It was the irony, we're named Merrimack, and we can't, we can't get to the Merrimack River. You know, it's like, it's a beautiful place to go boating, and, you know, it's just, we just can't get there. Safe, anyway, but ruining your car.
We're trespassing on somebody else's property.
Yes, Jody?
I just wanted to thank you, Paul and Eileen. There was an awful lot of information. I'm not used to seeing capital reserve funds of this magnitude, and having this presentation tonight with everybody speaking to the items was really helpful to me. Thank you.
One last comment. Communities come up, I was at a conference today. The communities came up to me today, and they want, they wanna talk to me more about our capital reserve. How'd you get capital reserves established? How are you saving for these things? How are you getting your projects done? How come you're not bonding? How come you're not doing this? How come you're not doing that? And, and it is because we save for our projects, and we save over a number of years. And it's because we have a capital improvement plan that is used, and it's not just the document that gets put on a shelf year after year after year after year.
It's a work.
It is funded.
And it is funded, and that's the other thing. It's funded. So, we have these capital reserve funds and explain, and trying to explain that to these people. And several larger communities are like, man, I talk all the time to my council about Merrimack and how they do things with the capital reserve. So, I just wanna say that we are looked at for our capital reserve funds and our funding of our capital reserve.
When do you present to the planning board? 'Cause I know, I know each entity presents.
I, I think it's the week of the, what is it?
First, December one.
Is it December one?
It's the next planning board meeting.
I like to watch to see how they.
It's one, it's either the first one or the second one. It wasn't supposed to be on the week of the budget.
They don't like, they like it very brief. They like, I've been told to make, to keep it brief and to just focus on the current year. So, but I, you know, as I said, I think the most important things of what Paul just said is that Merrimack really needs to pat itself on the back for having established these and having continued to fund them, because we're saving millions of dollars in interest.
Dan?
My question is to Tom, Mr. Institution, 'cause I've only been here.
Which one?
Institutional knowledge.
Not institutional.
Since I've only been here for, since two thousand and ten, so I walked into budgeting with Keith Hickey, who was the first manager I had to deal with, and it just seemed like that was the way it always was done here. So, is it just the way, is that the answer? Why has it been done that way over the last, say, thirty years?
Started about nineteen, no, it started, there were, there were a lot of limitations in the seventies and the eighties on establishing capital reserve funds. You just couldn't, you just weren't allowed by state law to set them up for some of the things that we have them set up for.
And they also needed to be very specific.
Yeah, you had to, you know, the restrictions on them were enormous. In the nineties, that started to loosen up. But we already had capital reserve funds established. We put them together in the early, mid-eighties when we started, started doing, doing that, you know, piece at a time, a little at a time. The ones that were allowed by law, we were allowed, you know, we put those in place. And so, when the laws started to change in the late nineties and the early two thousands, then we were able to, you know, before, you couldn't budget for maintenance like you can now. You couldn't budget for a lot of things.
I think he did the big consolidations.
Yeah, and we did, we did what? In two thousand and seven, probably two thousand and seven, we did what, four or five of those, where we consolidated those funds and put them all, put them all together and give them the proper title on them, was about what they were about, but we were able to consolidate those, you know, and it makes it easier for, for us to keep track of it, and it makes it easier for the residents to understand what we're trying to do with them. But, yeah, it's been going on for a long time, and it's something that we've, you know, we've worked on, and we've worked on, you know, Bob LaVanne did a lot of, you know, did a lot of that, a lot of that early work, Kevin McSweeney, setting these up and making sure that they, that they got, that they were used appropriately. So, we established the integrity of the system.
It just seems funny to hear that we're so different from everybody else, and it seems like.
Well, the other thing that they don't realize is that a lot of those were the agents to expend. And a lot of towns, they don't want their selectmen to have any, any kind of authority to anything like that, to be the agents to expend.
There are towns and cities that actually bond every year. So, like, for instance, the city of Dover, every year, they issue a bond. Every single year.
Wow.
Bedford has now a history of, thank you, of bonding their road.
Yeah, all their roads.
Maintenance and so on.
It seems, once you go that route, you, you just will always repeat it.
You can never catch up, it seems like.
Yeah, it's like, you know, when that one's done, you're back to borrowing another thirty or forty million dollars again, so.
And also, I'm sure, as to the stability of the rate, because there's gradual improvements rather than a bond and up and down.
Right, and if you, if you do have to bond, you've got a capital reserve fund going in, and then you get to the bond, and now you can offset some of that, and it takes up the slack, so.
Well, Claremont, Claremont learned the lesson on that one, because they did a lot, they almost, they started doing the same thing, but with not nearly as robust a tax base. I mean Dover, Dover's tax base now is incredibly different than what it was, you know, years ago. And so, they have a lot more flexibility with that. See, Claremont didn't have that. They started doing two million or two and a half million or three million dollars a year to do stuff. And all of a sudden, they found out that their, that their fixed costs for debt service was killing them. They, they almost went, they, they were. Yeah, they almost went bankrupt. They were, they were probably six months away from it.
Bill?
I was just going to comment that when I joined the council in two thousand and eleven, and it's the first year that Eileen had joined the council, she kind of made it a commitment to wanting to build up the whole capital, capital reserve account. So, I think it really, it's a, it's a philosophy that she had to sell to the town council. And since I've found out tonight, I don't speak for the town council and only speak for myself, I can only say that, as one of seven, I have bought into the philosophy of saving for a rainy day. I've bought into the philosophy that we only bond when we need to bond, and we're also very grateful to have a guy by the name of Kyle Fox, who writes, writes grants and grants and grants, so that we're able to, you know, allocate, you know, the, the whole eighty-twenty thing. I mean, Kyle was here a couple, either a year ago, and I forget what the project was, but it was kind of a last-minute thing. He got, he got grant money, came out of nowhere, and had we not planned and saved for that particular moment, we might not have been able to take, take advantage of that, that moment in time. So, I, I really think, again, speaking for me, philosophically, we've ta, we've taken a good approach as to how we're planning strategically for our future and making sure that we have the funds available so that when things do come up, we're able to collectively get together as a council and decide, is this a prudent expenditure? And if so, you know, what do we need to do to, to act on it? So, I mean, that, that's, you know, I'm kind of shocked that some of the other, I mean, I shouldn't be shocked. I'm happy that they look to Merrimack as, as a leader in this particular area, but I also think it's kind of an indictment that other communities aren't embracing strategic planning from a financial perspective, so that, you know, obviously, the whole agent to expend thing, Council Mayor's point's well taken. You know, there's only certain communities can do that. A lot of other communities don't have that particular flexibility, so I think we're very fortunate in that regard. Thank you.
Keep in mind that the statutes, the budgeting, the budgetary statutes at the local level encourage you to only look at one year. They don't want you to look out and see what's around the corner. And keep in mind that in nineteen eighty or eighty-one, the Budget Committee liquidated all capital reserve funds for the town and the school district.
Eileen?
Another, another reason why that's so difficult is because, once you get into bonding, and then you have a big placeholder for your bond payments, it's hard to then start putting, having your bond payments and then starting. So, so you're kind of like double-dipping to try and keep up with it. So, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to get yourself off the bonds and onto the capital reserve funds. So, you know, I understand why that, that happens, but as I said, you know, Merrimack really needs to be commended, because I, I used to be involved in finance before I was manager, and I never saw a community that had, that embraced the capital reserve funds to that, this extent, or had such little debt, so very little debt.
So, they were envious of you, Paul, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and if you really, really wanna be a historian, go back and read some of the old town reports about some of these capital reserves that Council Mahone was talking about. Fifty dollars for a dozer. It's, it's amazing.
'Cause you had to be that specific.
Because you had to be that specific. And why are you buying that dozer? So, it's very interesting reading when I was doing research on the capital reserve.
Of course, the budget was probably a hell of a lot less too. The population was much less.
Yes, but it's, it's very interesting. For all you historians, still find the old town reports.
Right. They'll be reading ad time reports fifty years from now going, what were those yahoos thinking? Thank you very much. Any other questions from anyone? As usual, very thorough, presented very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the last item on the agenda, which, knock on wood, should be fairly short. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming. you very much, gentlemen, for coming. Town Council, School District, Conservation.
Fox is leaving the building, everyone.
That was good. Town Council, School District, Conservation Commission Letters of Engagement Discussion. Eileen?
That's the closing time.
Give you a minute to breathe. I can initially just, I can sort of describe it if you want. Go ahead. Are you ready?
Yes. We have, as we enter into the, the area of writing our letters and getting into the intervention process with the pipeline and FERC, we end up having, we, we have different entities that all want, want to be represented by Joanna. So who's our legal environmental attorney who's working on this for us. And she, she has concerns and has spoken to her ethics person in her department about being able to engage different entities that may have different interests. So that if we, if she engaged the school district and the Conservation Commission and the town council, from the writing of the letter all the way through the intervention process, there may be some conflict at some point. We may veer off and then she would have to get out of the mix entirely. So what she, after speaking to her ethics person and after I spoke to Marge Chaffrey, the superintendent of schools, about they want to engage as well as the Conservation Commission, each one of them individually, would like to engage Joanna to write the letter, to establish their intervenor status. And so she wanted to make sure that it was okay with her to write separate engagement letters for that task only for them so that we can be very specific about how she is representing us and, and as, as individual groups. So she would, this basically says, she will write the letter for the Conservation Commission, she will write the letter for the school district, they will pay her, and then they're, then Joanna is all ours to avoid conflicts.
So she would not represent anyone but, but us in the actual intervenor status? Okay. Now, do you need, what do we need? Just your, our approval?
Yes.
A motion?
You just give me, whatever you want to do. I just need direction from you.
I think it's nice and clean. I don't think writing the letter to initiate the status is a big deal. I did have some concerns about the potential for a conflict, but that's been resolved. So Jody?
Yeah. We had our Conservation Commission meeting this past Monday and because timeliness is an issue, we're kind of under the gun. So by allowing Joanna to write the letter on behalf of the Conservation Commission, that's, that's a huge benefit for that group. The Conservation Commission has publicly and individual members have privately stated how appreciative they are of the support that the town council has given to them as a group. I mean, we've financially supported them, we've legally supported them, we've had incredibly good lines of communication through this whole process, and they're very, very appreciative of that. They know that the town doesn't have to do that. Even though we are all on the same team, it's still, they're two separate entities. And after this letter is written and done, there were formal discussions at our meeting about retaining our own attorney because the Conservation Commission has so much at stake through this project that we didn't feel that doing this as laymen on our own without legal representation was really in our best interest either. So Joanna has also been helpful in pointing us to some different attorneys and we're doing some research on our own. But just to let you know that that was the conversation of the commission this past week. So, but they really are appreciative of what the town council has done to support them.
Thank you, Jody. Any other comments or do we have a consensus that we agree with what's been proposed? Okay, I guess we're all set.
Yeah, I had asked for a, I had asked for the sample, just so you have some idea of what, of how the thing would read and what it would look like. Not everybody, I mean, I've seen these, you know, enough times to know what they were doing. But the other thing is, the other concern that I had raised is that there is case law in New Hampshire about an attorney representing two different people in the same proceeding. And so it was just, it's just cleaner.
Yeah. Excellent. Okay, well, we have, let's ask you that. We have no minutes. Comments from the press? Got to come up. Might as well introduce yourself.
I've been here for five years. This is the first time I think I'm taking a question from the press.
Isn't that awesome?
Hi there. First of all, why don't you introduce yourself?
Okay, first, my name's Sarah Webb. I'm from the National Telegraph. I've been there for like four months. And I'm going to start covering more of the Maramac area. So I look forward to hearing from all of you, cool crazy story ideas, things that are important to your town. I love to write about them.
Excellent.
My question was, when is the town council meeting with the school board? Because you mentioned that earlier and I feel like that's something I should know about.
December 10th.
December 10th. Okay.
Thursday, December 10th.
Tentative.
Tentative. It'll be very, yeah. I'm pretty sure it will be, but it's tentative. And it will occur in this room. And, and we alternate who hosts it, and it's their turn this year. So Chris Ortega is probably the person, if you want more details about the meeting, he's the chair of the school board.
Okay, great. And that was my question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thanks. Thank you.
There's no public, so we're not going to get any comments from them. Comments from the council. Bill, let's go swing around. Then Jody.
A couple of things. First off, I wanted to belatedly wish the veterans of our community a very happy Veterans Day. And I hope they enjoyed celebrating the day. That's very important to not just all of us, but to them for the services that they gave both in wartime and in peacetime to represent our country. So I certainly want to, want to thank them. I want to congratulate Brendan Snell for another successful blood drive at the St. James United Methodist Church. I think he was able to collect 67 pints of blood, I think was the final count. And this also marked the very first year that he could actually give blood. So that was kind of a big deal as well. Yep. So congratulations to, to, to Brandon. No small feat. Thanksgiving's coming up. Happy Thanksgiving to the community. And a quick reminder of the Maramac Rotary's Turkey Trot, which will be at the middle school. I kind of was under the assumption it was going to be at the high school. It's actually at the middle school. So I'm excited about that. More information, it's maramac5k.com. And on, on a, on a personal note, as part of the extended family of the Boston College community, I want to offer my condolences to the Flutie family on the passing of Doug's parents one hour apart from each other. Absolutely.
Amazing.
Absolutely flabbergasted by that. And Doug was quoted as saying that his mom had a broken heart as a result of her.
There's something very bittersweet about that.
Yeah, there is. There is. So I was, I was heartbroken to, to hear that story, but certainly wanted to extend my condolences to the Flutie family. And last but not least, Boston College versus Notre Dame Saturday night at Fenway Park. Why it's a Notre Dame home game is beyond me. It's a, it's a B.C. home game, so go Eagles. And happy Thanksgiving again, everybody.
Go to Fenway.
Jody?
Thank you. I just wanted to give you some more information regarding our Conservation Commission meeting this past week. I believe the land purchase closing is going to be tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. So everybody cross your fingers that it all goes smoothly. That's a huge, huge win for the town of Maramac. Also, we still have openings. We have one full-time opening on the Conservation Commission and we have three alternate openings. So if anyone's interested in getting involved, people think they need to have experience. I'll tell you, there's so many things that I'm learning on this commission that I don't have experience. I mean, I've got some governmental experience, but lots of things I'm learning. If you're willing to roll up your sleeves, we could use you. So please contact Becky Thompson in the town manager's office if you're interested in putting your name in for the Conservation Commission. We also have several subcommittees, the Greater Woods Subcommittee, Horse Hill Nature Preserve, and Wildcat Falls, which all have openings of one type or another. And then the other item that they mentioned that they would like me to take back to the council, and Eileen and I have discussed this too, and I just wanted to throw a reminder out there. They, the Conservation Commission has come up with a beaver policy and water control activities management plan. And we actually have a flyer that we're working on that's going to be posted on maramacoutdoors.gov, the website. But some of that plan involves financial support and it's for actual devices that are being installed to help with the management of the, the beavers.
Set aside why for that?
Right. Which, which I just wanted to, well, I, I know we had a conversation months ago, Eileen, and I just, since budget season is coming up, they asked me to just ask about it and say that it would, they were hoping that the town would have some money in this year's budget for that. And I know you said that you were looking at possibly doing that. But if you, no, you're giving me?
We have money set aside. We, what, I'll, I'll get in touch with Tim.
Gage. Gage Perry.
I'll get in touch with Gage and make sure what we're setting aside is what we need to set aside because I think we're setting aside maintenance for it.
Okay. Because I believe that at the end of last year, when we were coming up with those various amounts of money to, from, from the money left over at the end of the year, one of those components was for a big, a good part of the amount of money that was going to be needed for the beaver management plan. So.
I don't know the specifics on the breakdown on who was going to do what. Gage and Tim would know that better than me, but they just wanted me to ask about it in case it was forgotten.
Okay. Just, just so, it, it hasn't been forgotten. But just so you know, there is money already set aside that they may not know about. So we'll have, Paul will get in touch with them and we'll, you know, see what needs to be done.
Thank you. And they asked me to share that when you're spending money on this, you're actually saving money because otherwise you'd be spending money on water damage and mitigation. And it's actually less expensive to control the beaver population and their construction than it is to take care of the water damage as a result of the dam building. So, thank you. That's all I had. Thanks.
The dam building.
Yeah.
Fenway?
It's chump change. The money that, that they're asking us to invest in that to protect the town's assets and the roads and whatnot is very, you know, the amount is very minimal.
And, and private homeowners have had extensive damage over the years from, from the beaver work. Yep.
I'm glad Jody reminded me, the Heritage Commission is well is looking for volunteers. I'm not sure of the numbers, but we definitely could take anybody that would want to come on board. Our next thing is, I just wanted to wish Florence Smokler relaxed and long, enjoyable retirement. She closed up a restaurant a week and a half ago and had been in business in Maramac, I think it was for 26 years, which is a long time. So good for her. And then I did read, well, I didn't get your email and I apologize for that. I, I did notice in an email, I think today, that Maramac Fire Rescue has given a lot of, a lot of Tory comments, I guess, from, from a cardiologist in particular and an ED physician. I don't know what that is, but.
Emergency department.
Oh, okay. And, and they.
For fast response.
And the picture was amazing of the artery that was plugged completely and it opened up and the guy survived what otherwise had been a certain fatality without the expertise of our fire crew. And so just wanted to put that out there. Yes.
Tom? Oh, I'm sorry, you wanted something?
I just wanted to say that I wanted to make, I've been telling the, the fire chief and his, and his command staff that they really need to be letting everybody know so that I can forward this information onto the council because they really are a phenomenal fire department. And we don't get all the details like we do from some of the other departments. So, you know, they, they've started sending them along and I will continue to forward them to you.
Well, I wish I had a cheerier note, but I went to the municipal managers' meeting today, their annual meeting and which is part of the NHMA conference, which we are not a member of. And I got the bum's rush on how come we're not a member?
Right away?
No, it took a little while. Once they figured I wasn't registered, so I didn't have any authority to be in the, in the exhibit area.
Embarrassing.
No, it wasn't embarrassing. But anyway, I just want, want you to know that they're still trying to win us back, as it were. But I told them, I'm not, I'm not taking part in that discussion, nor am I going to be the one advocating for it one way or the other. So, but anyway, that's all I've got.
But just wanted to say that I have asked the department heads to give me a list of things that they actually receive in terms of training and things like that from the New Hampshire Municipal Association so that we can look at it again. But to me, the problem is that a lot of the communities use the legal services of the New Hampshire Municipal Association. And I feel that we are kind of subsidizing that because we have our own legal people and we need to get answers right like this. We can't wait, nor can we get kind of squishy answers. We need decisive answers and we need them right away. So we don't use the legal services and, you know, we end up paying whatever our fee is, $20,000. I don't know that we get that much in benefits from it. So I'm, I've asked the department heads to, to tell me what they feel that they're missing and what, of what value that is to them.
Thank you. I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and hope everyone enjoys it. Have a good, long weekend, hopefully. It's a long weekend for me, I know. But, right, Tom?
Every week's a long weekend.
Yeah, the grandkids will be in town.
Good night, everyone.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. No one's name. 600. Good night.